Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting to order here. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on May 2, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. That 10:30 a.m. is an approximate time when the planning items do come forward on the agenda. Before we do the -- now I'm going to do the roll call. Everyone's here. We do have an announcement, and it's an unusual thing. We don't usually run into it. But just for those folks, especially that are here for the -- and will be here for the conditional or the ordinance revision, we're going to have to call the meeting at about 12:45. This room's going to get used for the tax. What do you call that?
Board of Equalization meeting.
Board of Equalization meeting. And we've agreed to get out of here by 1 o'clock for them so that they can set up and have their time for today. Anything that's going on with our items at that time will be continued beyond that because we still have to do our closing item in 19 through 24. So I just wanted you to know to try to control the meeting. If anybody's sitting here when it's later, we're going to call or continue what we're on at about 12:45. That's the end of the announcements. Everybody's here on roll call. The very first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 10, 2023. Have you all had a chance to read through your packet and review those minutes? If so, the chairman would --
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the minutes of April 10, 2023. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. The same goes for the agenda. Have you had a chance to review today's agenda? If so, chair would address a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as submitted. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to the consent agenda. Brittany?
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Malado, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from the agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 10-04 for Deep Creek Outfitters, Mount Isabron, to review a home occupation and gunsmithing business in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 10-04 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 19-07 for Black Hills Kart Racing, to review a dirt track to be used for dirt track kart racing in a commercial district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 19-07 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 21-09 for Michael Fessler, to review a home occupation, a home-based firearm sales, gunsmithing, firearm manufacturing in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 21-09 with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU 21-42 for Cal SD LLC, Tina Roberts, to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 21-42 with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review CU 21-57 for Kevin and Deanne Killian, to review two primitive seasonal cabins to be used as bunkhouses for no more than 180 days in an agriculture district, and staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 21-57 to the May 8, 2023, Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant time to post the addresses on the structures. Item eight is conditional use permit review CU 21-71 for Greg Helgason, to review living in a 12-by-56 trailer while building living quarters in an existing shop building in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 21-71 with conditions. Item number nine is conditional use permit review CU 22-18 for A&amp;B Cabins LLC, Alyssa and Brian Boshi, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 22-18 with conditions. And finally, item 10 is conditional use permit review CU 22-39 for A&amp;B Cabins LLC, Alyssa and Brian Boshi, to review an existing cabin to remain and to be used as storage only in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 22-39 with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Any items from -- that the staff would desire to have pulled?
No, not at this time.
Anyone in the audience can have an item pulled should they so desire. They are here to speak on items from 3 through 10. This would be the time to do so. The commission. All right. Chair is ready for a motion and approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent calendar. Items 3 through 10, per the staff's recommendations. Discussion. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 11. Thank you, Jason.
Morning, commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 11 is conditional use permit 23-10 to allow a grain bin to be utilized for food and beverage sales on the subject property during the summer months. The applicants are Nathan and Alexis Sobleski. Location of the property is on East Highway 44, located at the intersection of Sobos Road and East Highway 44. Lot size is 2.43 acres, currently zoned suburban residential district. Existing land use is agriculture or structure. Surrounding zoning is agriculture. Access is off Sobos Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permits, and they are on the screen. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. No, allowing this conditional use permit should not be detrimental or endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, no. The requested use should not have any negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the neighborhood. Number three, no. Allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal early development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes. The property is currently vacant of any utilities. The use of portlets will be used as a means of wastewater disposal. Number five, yes. Ingress and ingress will be provided via proposed approach off Sobos Road. Space for parking appears to be adequate as the property is 2.43 acres of flat land. Number six, yes. The property is zoned suburban residential district. The requested use may be allowed within approved conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, yes. Future land use of the property is agriculture. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan viewed to 2040. You can see on the screen, this is the applicant's site plan. He plans to relocate a grain bin onto the property. There is an existing structure there that was placed in 1965. It is a Quonset-style steel structure. Some property history. The property was platted in 1990. The Board of Commissioners also rezoned this property in 1992, suburban residential This is a view of the property looking to the northwest. You can see that Quonset-style building there. And you can see, this is kind of the unique situation when this property was rezoned as suburban residential district because it is in the middle of agriculture. Did some research, and when this was platted, this property and another one to the south were specifically platted off of the agriculture district properties that were out there to allow the sale of that ag property. And these other two properties had structures on them, and that's why they wanted those separated from the sale. So with that, staff would recommend approval of conditional use permit 23-10 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Yes, I have one. No septic tank and no water?
No, they'll be using portlets.
Okay. I guess the other thing, is there a petition? Is there a room inside that they're doing this in, or?
No. So if you recall, last year at this time, Sobleski's also had a similar use on this small property. If you look on the screen, just to the south.
That was a round building or something, wasn't it?
Right. And that's the same thing they're proposing on this property as well.
Okay. All right. That's all.
Jason, you know I'm not in the habit of supporting the metal buildings through these. I just think they're a cute situation. But I consider this one a Quonset rather than a -- and I realize it was used for grain storage as well, but it's a Quonset, which is a different situation. So my question would be, do you require when they're setting this up building to add like an excess door, another door to get out of, walk door?
No, we would leave that on Department of Health, whether they allow that use out there or not.
Okay. Based on their requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I can understand that. Any other questions for Jason? Is your applicant here and want to?
I don't believe they are in the audience.
Okay. Good. Any discussion from the commission before we move forward?
I want -- yes, I have a question. So is there intent now to use the Quonset hut that's there or to move a grain bin in?
I believe they'll be utilizing that more or less as storage to support the operations.
The Quonset hut?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is the commission ready to propose an action?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of CU 23-10.
Second.
All right. Moved in second and to, per staff's recommendation, to approve conditional use permit CU 23-10. Discussion. From the audience. Anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on this? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 12. Number 12, I just have, I do have a speaker request form in that as well as we have a person on Zoom, and they're up, and we can see you. Can you hear us? We're not hearing you, so we're gonna -- can you hear us? Just give us a high sign or something. We're not hearing you. Is this your applicant?
I believe so.
Okay. We should try to get the -- what?
He's got his computer set up.
Could your computer be set on mute?
I found the mute button. I turned it off if you're referring to me.
Yes. We're ready to go then. We just wanted to make sure you were ready on Zoom with us.
Well, when I click another button, then you guys disappear, and then I can't find any of the buttons anymore. So I've got like three or four Zoom.
All right. But you can hear us.
Yep, I can hear you. Thanks.
All right. We're going to go ahead and start this item. Thank you. Megan, go ahead.
Megan Talmage, Planner. Agenda item number 12 is conditional use permit 23-11 and is to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant is Stacy Kudel with Saddle Properties LLC. The location is 13044 Songquist Lane. Their current zoning is suburban residential, and their existing land use is residential. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 23-11 to the May 22, 2023, meeting to allow for the applicant to re-advertise and resend notice of hearing letters.
All right. Very good. Any questions for Megan at this point? We're gonna -- all right. Are you Stacy?
Yes.
Okay. Stacy, we usually have the folks that are here with their speaker request form. Go ahead and speak before you. Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
Thank you. All right. We have two speaker request forms on this. Celeste Lechance.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Celeste Lechance, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Jim. And we own the adjacent property, which is 13030, which we purchased in 2020, and it is currently a full-time rental for us. Our renter has been there since 2020, since we purchased the property. And I have a couple notes that I took here that I'd like to share. One that we pay over $8,000 in taxes per year. We purchased this home in this beautiful residential area. We currently rent our home out to a family per our rules and per a residential lease that we created. This short-term renter that may come in next door to us would not be a vetted renter, or rather, fully vetted renter. Additionally, we use a local management company that we hired to ensure that our property is well-managed and protected. This includes ensuring that our tenant remains vetted. We go the extra step to ensure the tenant is a good fit, not only for us, but also for our community. We would also like to preserve the neighborhood so that it continues to be a livable neighborhood, providing a good quality life for families. These types of neighborhoods are becoming less and less available. We also support the motel and hotel industry, and it should be supported as they add jobs and have a staff that is present 7:24 overseeing activities. We are also planning to move into our residential neighborhood. However, if the zoning rules change, we will probably simply follow suit, and a contagion of short-term rentals will overtake the once-quiet neighborhood. My apologies. Also, as a personal note, I have been an Airbnb host, short-term rental host, since 2010. In 2018, we had a historic home that had been rented, and it was trashed. I received a phone call from the neighbors. There was garbage bags on the sidewalk, garbage bags all over the property. It was in a beautiful, historic neighborhood, so we discontinued our short-term rental situation. Yes, you can make a large sum of money. However, I would like to respect our neighborhood and not have -- keep it residential. We came to this area from Portland, Oregon. We came here to respect our community and not exploit it. And that's it. If you have any questions for me?
Questions for Celeste? I do.
Go ahead.
So your bad experience was with a short-term rental, not full-time rental?
We were not on site, so I received a call from the neighbors that there was garbage all over our yard. The house was completely trashed as well, and this was for a week rental.
Okay. Was -- were you tied with any of the national, I guess you'd call, internet services that book these things?
Yes. It was through Airbnb.
Was there any recourse through those people?
The recourse was as I filed an insurance claim with them and received a sum of money for the damages to the property.
Based upon an adjustment of some sort that had to be agreed upon?
Correct. So, I mean, there was damage in the interior of the home, but also was the exterior of the home, which I received a call from our neighbors. We lived, you know, like a couple blocks away, not that far, but it was a short-term rental, and we were not there on site.
I apologize that I'm so interested in this. This is the first time I've ever had a testimony that the trashing problem was from a short-term renter. That I can remember. Yes, go ahead.
Ma'am, was that here in South Dakota?
No, that was not here in South Dakota. That was in a suburb of Portland, Oregon, a small community called Oregon City. It was a residential neighborhood. It was a historical neighborhood, and we had a beautiful historic home that we had on Airbnb for short-term rental.
Okay. Wow. Any other questions for Celeste?
How many years did you have that short-term rental?
Oh, I had that one was two years. I'd been with Airbnb since 2010 and had multiple rentals, but that particular home in that residential neighborhood was only for two years.
And that was the one event that you had?
And that was the one event. I had some other issues as well, but they were urban rentals. This was in a strictly residential historic neighborhood.
Other questions for Celeste? Thank you, Celeste. I appreciate them.
Thank you very much for your time.
We have another speaker request on this item. Larry Luxinger?
I wasn't planning on being here today. I was under the impression that this wouldn't be addressed until the May 22 meeting. And I'm not a public speaker. I have a terrible fear of public speaking. But I did put some things together here, and I think probably the best thing for me to do is just read to you guys what I put together. I was hoping to get you guys packets, and I probably will get you packets before the 22nd. You shook your head no?
No, go ahead.
And so that -- but this is a packet, and since I'm totally unprepared, I'll go ahead and just read what I had written up for you guys. And we live immediately next door to this property. This property has a private access easement that serves my property, the Stacy's property, and David and Mark Whittenable's property. And as part of the easement, when we did a lot realignment, they're required to put in a emergency vehicle cul-de-sac at the end of that private drive. So I was kind of shocked when I saw a guy putting up a sign that said, you know, this is a private drive. And that's, you know, the first thing that got me. But we have had some experience with the other neighbor. Stacy's property is 92 feet from my front door. The property next to us, which is also a vacation home property, is 96 feet from my front door. And we've had ongoing issues with that property. I'll go ahead and read what they have. "We hope that you will take the time to read the information we have enclosed. We agree with the Seventh Circuit Court conclusion that renting has an adverse effect on the quality of our lives and the general scenic and tranquil environment in which we live, and that such an adverse effect on the quality of our lives and the scenic and tranquil nature of the neighborhood cannot be adequately compensated in money damages. The property across the street from me that has been approved," which I was shocked, "they went to -- they had -- it's a -- it was the Hammerquist subdivision. It's now the Songquist subdivision, Songquist Acres. Their parents had fought for years." I've lived there for 40 years. Their parents, in that subdivision, there's a covenant that says that properties can only be used for one single-family dwelling. One single family is the way it says, and not for commercial use. After the parents died, this went -- they threw the Seventh Circuit Court, who approved that it could only be used for one single family. It was appealed and went to the South Dakota State Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court upheld that ruling of the Seventh Circuit Court. So I thought there's no way that these guys are going to be able to do this vacation home. But the permit was granted. I still don't understand that one. But this is what this is relating to. This is again from the Seventh Circuit Court. "That not renting provides benefit to us as property owners by maintaining the residential character of neighborhood and contributing to the enhancement of quality of life in this historical and scenic area. I need to clarify that this ruling by the Seventh Circuit Court was related to the Hammerquist subdivision, Songquist Acres, which lies just across Songquist Lane to the south. The ruling pertains to the use of a residence as single-family use only and not as..." In this ruling, they were trying to rent out the lower area of one, one of the residences in that neighborhood. So it had to do with two-family dwelling. Nevertheless, we feel the Seventh Circuit Court got it right, that they would conclude a similar, if not more emphatic, opinion should they be discussing transient vacation home rentals. We have lived in the neighborhood for over 40 years now and chose this area for the exact reasons quoted by the court, as well as a few more. The area is beautiful, scenic, tranquil, safe, abundant wildlife, and also we have a creek that runs through the middle of our property, which we love and enjoy. But things have changed. Here we go. Approximately two years ago, our neighbors crossed the street, changed a family cabin, and got a conditional use permit, but somehow it was granted. We were assured that the county and our neighbors, that the rules and regulations would be followed, and that if any issues arose, they would be dealt with immediately. But we have lived with this situation for three years now, and we can tell you that in reality, this simply is not true. We have also learned that according to Pennington County Planning Staff, that once a permit has been granted, none a single one has been revoked. We hope that you have chosen to live in this neighborhood. This is going out to my neighbors. I have included information for them. And then I have some other information here. This is the letter submitted to you guys. Our objection to Stacy Kudel for the conditional use permits, which would allow the vacation property at 13044. To fully understand our position, I'll go into that. "We have been neighbors with the Hammerquist over 40 years. Our relationship was always positive, assisting each other when times when tasks required, fishing each other's property with no permission required, attending get-togethers at each other's properties, providing additional sleeping area for each family during family reunions. And Rob and I would play racquetball two or three times a week for many years. In February 2020, we came home to see a notification sent to Hammerquist Property informing property owners for a request for conditional use. I called the planning department and was informed that the reason for permit was going to be requested in order for a vacation rental home. I later followed up with Rob, who verified that information. We were shocked and surprised at this information, as the possibility of a cattle being used as a vacation rental had never been brought to our attention. And we visited with the Hammerquist frequently. In addition, we are aware that their parents had endured a lengthy, drawn-out struggle to ensure that properties within the subdivision remained in one-family status, which could not be rented out for commercial purposes." That's from the Seventh Circuit Court. There was a property owner within the subdivision which was renting his property. I already explained that. "Violating property," and this is a finding of facts from the Seventh Circuit Court. "If defendant was permitted to rent out a part of his property, it may establish a precedent permitting a change in the quality of the neighborhood. The restricted covenant in question provides a benefit to the plaintiffs, the people Hammerquist and Porter who had the covenants. The restricted covenant in question provides a benefit to the plaintiffs, property by maintaining the residential character of the neighborhood and contributing to the enhancement of quality of life in this scenic area." These are not my words. These are the Seventh Circuit Court. "Renting had an adverse effect on the quality of their life and the general scenic and tranquil environment in which we live. Such an adverse effect on the quality of life and the scenic and tranquil nature of the neighborhood cannot be adequately compensated in money damages. The defendant will be permanently enjoined from renting a portion of his property to a separate and distinct family. The defendant later took this ruling to the South Dakota Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court upheld the Seventh Circuit Court ruling. I provided the Pennington County Planning Commission with copies of the restricted covenants contained in the contract for deed, copies of the Seventh Circuit Court facts and findings, and the Supreme Court's opinion. I also personally presented at the Planning Commission meeting. Much to our surprise, the Planning Commission actually granted the conditional use before we were built, and Hammerquist received the right for vacation rental property. Although disappointed on that was Rob and Tim Hammerquist, and was told that if any issues would ever arise, they would address these issues immediately. As we had been close for several years, I had no reason to believe this would not be the case. I left feeling assured that any issues would be quickly resolved. The Hammerquist rules and rentals and regulations allow for a maximum of four occupants, no more than four vehicles parked at any time, no pets, and quiet hours from 10 to 8. Within a couple of weeks of this conversation, two pickup trucks Within a couple of weeks of this conversation, two pickup trucks, two motorcycle trailers, and six motorcycles were parked in the driveway. I notified Rob of the issue and was told that no more than people, no more than four people would be staying that night. A little later, a third pickup showed up, and now seven people started moving bags into the cabin. I texted Rob of this and also informed him that they were racing down our road and pulling wheelies as they crossed the bridge. The text I received back simply stated, are the motorcycles noisy? Nothing was ever done to correct the issue. And that was the last conversation I ever had with the Hammerquist. Following this issue, I contacted my commissioner, who then referred me to the county enforcement officer. I began contacting the enforcement officer when violations occurred. I was never really made aware of what actions were taken to address the issues we were experiencing. I need to correct that. On one occasion, I was told Hammerquist had been notified, but the issue was never addressed. On numerous occasions, violations have occurred on this property, and nothing seems to ever be done. Violations and nuisances that we have experienced include excessive noise in and out of quiet times, number of occupants at the dwelling, number of vehicles in the parking area, motor homes with additional occupants parked on the property next to the, to the rental home, fifth wheels with additional occupants parked next to the property, to the rental home. We've had litter, we've had trespassing, nobody has fences out there. Why would you want to put up a fence in this area? It's a beautiful scenic area. It's residential. We've had trespassing. We've had individuals urinating in the driveway. We've had tents. We've had intoxication. We've had lights being shined in our windows. We have pets. No pets allowed. You know why people stay in Airbnbs? They can bring their pets, or at least they think they can. Probably 40% of the people that, that stay at that rental, this rental is 96 feet from my front door, bring pets. So I put up with barking dogs. All of these violations and nuisances have occurred at least once, and many on several occasions. On one occasion, I contacted the person I was supposed to contact, the county enforcement officer. I was frustrated that again, seven people were staying in the cabin. I took a picture of the motorcyclists, where the motorcycles were parked, pictures of the motorcycle, and pictures of the motorcyclists entering the cabin. The next morning, I again took pictures of the motorcycles, which were parked in the exact same location and position as the night before. I contacted the enforcement officer, the county enforcement, Dwayne, about this and was told that he could do nothing about it because the violation would have to go through the state's attorney's office. And even though I had photographic evidence, there was nothing to prove that the bikers had spent the night in the cabin. I was told in order to prove that, I would have had to sleep with them. It didn't make me happy. After hearing this, I asked, has anyone ever had their permit for a vacation rental revoked? The answer to that question was to no. At this point, I realized how futile it was for me to report any violations. The Hammerquist vacation property is less than 50 yards, I've told you this, 96 feet. Stacy's is 92 feet. I would be, I would be sandwiched between two vacation home rentals. In other words, I'd be sandwiched between, which potentially doubled the number of nuisances we have already been required to endure, with nothing being done. Not to mention now, how the presence of these properties will affect the marketability and value of my property. If I'm a young family or a retired couple, and I'm looking at to move into a neighborhood for retirement, do I want two vacation home properties sandwiched on either side of me? The way the, the way the word is is now, you could live on Rapid Creek, or you could live anywhere, and you can be boarded on all four sides by vacation home properties. Nobody should have to endure that. And that's ridiculous. In addition to the previously listed concerns, we have already endured, endured, the Cudel request would require the use of our private driveway. Our property is planted with a shared private easement to lots two, lots three R, and following the realignment of lot four. The shared easement is for private access and public utilities. The driveway easement is 25 yards from my front door, window, front window to the west. Sunquist Lane is a dead-end road without an emergency vehicle turnaround to the west. That is where the road ends, it dead-ends. Our property, my property, lies to the east end of Sunquist Lane, which, where it intersects with Forest Row. At the east end of my property, I have allowed room for, on my property, for emergency vehicles, parking, and turnaround. I have also branded the Johnson City Fire Department a limited use agreement for the use of a water stump, which is on my property, for their use in the case of emergencies. At the time of the lot realignment, the county required that an emergency vehicle cul-de-sac be planted at the end of the shared private access easement. The emergency vehicle cul-de-sac was flattered as directed, but at the time of this writing, has not been constructed. Our lives and the enjoyment of our property have already been negatively impact, impacted by the existence of a vacation rental property located 96 yards to the south. The improvement of a permit for a second vacation property, 92 yards to our west, would create a burden that we believe no property owner in Pennington County should have to endure. It is our hope that only in our, it is our hope that not only in our situation, but in, in the revisions to the current ordinance, which I may be too late for that, that no property owner be burdened with more than one vacation rental directly boarding their Excuse me. We strongly agree with the findings and facts expressed by the Seventh Circuit Court pertaining to the impact of rental properties in this neighborhood. We have endured ongoing issues with existing vacation property boarding our property to the west. We have concluded that there is very little, or if anything, that can be done to correct ongoing violations occurring at these vacation rental properties. We have learned that according to many Pennington County planning personnel, that once issued, not a single vacation property permit has been revoked. We fear that the existence of two vacation rental properties boarding two sides of our property will negatively impact the marketability and value of our property. We feel that the private access easement has been planted for the use of permanent residents of the lots included, and not for use by transient guests. We fear that the enjoyment we have received from living, living in this historic scenic quiet neighborhood for over the past 40 years will needlessly be taken from us and our neighbors for the economic benefit of a few. We are concerned for ourselves as well as our neighbors' safety with an increase in the number of transient guests. We hope that no other property owner in Pennington County should find themselves in the position we are now in. We respectfully request that you consider the unique position we are in when compared to other vacation rental requests. We currently have a vacation rental property boarding us to the south, required use of a private, private access easement for transients or guests, the lack of adequate emergency vehicles ingress and egress, impact on marketability and value of properties, and finally, the loss of enjoyment of property we have loved and cared for for 40 years. I have maps, I have copies of the Seventh Circuit Court ruling. I got whatever you guys need.
Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
I have a couple of questions, but since he's got a copy of that, that's one of the things I was going to ask about, because I was going to ask the particular case, so it's up to you if you want him to pass it out real quick.
What, if it isn't prepared where we could copy it. Larry, just for your knowledge, the, the planning department does furnish in our packet for review on items, all the information that people want to have on record, and, and you have a substantial amount, it'd be nicer to go through it.
Well, I just happened to show up. I didn't know that this, it was my understanding, you guys weren't even going to address this today.
Well, and it's all right, we do this because you're here, in case you don't have the opportunity to stand up on the next time and make the meeting. But we certainly would encourage you to send it to the, your copy to the planning department, no matter how many pages, just a copy. And it is furnished to the commissioners that are going to review the matter, so.
Commissioners, are you talking about the planning commissioners, or are you talking about the county commissioners?
We always have one county commissioner as a liaison member, we have one today, and it's Travis. And, but the, it's in our packets that we review prior to the.
Yeah, Megan mentioned that to me.
Okay. We certainly would encourage you to have that, so it's available for review when this comes up on the 22nd.
Now, you understand that that ruling was for the other vacation property, the one to my south. Stacy's vacation property is to my west.
Right. Then my next question is, can you help us and show us which one of your, which place is yours up here on this?
13046. And I measured it yesterday from my front door to the, the entrance drive at 13044 is 92 feet. The road that.
Can I stop you there? You, you had yards one place and feet in another.
It's 90, well, 92 feet.
92.
30 yards, 2 feet. It's 92 feet from my front door to that front entrance. To Stacy's property. And then 13049, you can't really see it because Sunquist Lane, it's written across the top of it, but pretty much where that, 13046, where the little icon is, the blue icon, that's the front door of my house, and my front living room window. From that point over to Hammerquist driveway is 96 feet. The driveway you see between 13044 and 13046 is a private, private access easement for private access and private utilities. To the north end, towards Highway 44, at the end of that, the county required us to plant an emergency vehicle turnaround. As you can see, that turnaround has not been constructed. That lot is owned by David and Marty Whittenable. David and Marty, I talked to their daughter yesterday, they still haven't received any notification of this. Laurel came over yesterday and spoke to us about this.
Of course, that's the basic reason it's being continued, is get the proper notifications out.
Well, the basic reason is, is because the applicant didn't sign the property in adequate time. The sign was put up seven days prior, maybe eight days prior. So we didn't have time to do anything. I mean, I'm scrambling. I'm looking for all kinds of documents, I'm trying to get attorneys, I'm scrambling. And I called Megan, and Megan, I don't know how she does it, but she could tell from the photo, when that photo had been taken, she verified what I had said. So that's why it's been.
I'm not, I'm not saying that the, the sign is not of equal importance to the notifications.
Oh, sure, sure. But David and Marty, their daughter checks their mail, she was at my place yesterday and said, we haven't received anything. You know, David and Marty are now in Arizona, they'll be back, I think, on May 20th. And I haven't spoke to any of the other neighbors that are impacted, but I put this same packet together for all my adjoining neighbors. Bottom line, I can't see how, I, first of all, I can't see how Hammerquist was ever approved. I was stunned. It was like, I put this packet together, did you guys read it? And I'm not talking about you guys per se, but it was a big packet. I thought, how can this happen? And I don't think anybody should have to endure, if Hammerquist remains, nobody should have to endure two rental properties on either side of their private residence. That's gotta, I'm a certified residential appraiser. That's gotta impact value and marketability. You're taking a piece of the market out by doing that. A retired, you know, and I brought this up at the Hammerquist meeting. You know, a retired couple looks at that, has, you know, teenage children, teenage daughters, and you got transient guests roaming around the neighborhood, trespassing on your property? That's not a, that's not a salable feature. So yeah, we have some very serious concerns.
Thank you, Larry.
And how a private access road can be used, I never worried about.
Larry, we're kind of going back over the same stuff again, I don't mean to.
Yeah.
I understand the road, but I do have to say that the Hammerquist is not the issue here. We're public and have an agenda on this one, and I realize it's a big issue for you.
It contributes to the situation.
Sure. I'm, I'm, I understand that, but we're not in a position to review what you're submitting yet or anything in regards to the Hammerquist. We don't have anything like that in our file, so.
You'll have it.
Okay.
You'll have it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other questions for Larry? Thank you.
Glad I showed up. Because I just happened to.
Anyone else that would like to speak? That's the two speaker requests I had on that? Okay. Stacy, would you please introduce yourself for the record and go ahead and, and take off from there?
Okay, well, my name is Stacy Cudel, and I bought that property at 13044 Sunquist Lane for maybe five years ago, with the intent that someday my wife and I would retire there. And we're probably three or four years, maybe five, from retirement, depending upon how much more taxes go up, but my property value hasn't been impacted at all by the short-term rental across the street, as it's up over 200% in the last two years. So I guess our thought was that we were planning on managing this property because we've got, I'm, my, in my occupation, I'm a development director, and I travel, I've been to 44 of the lower 48 states in the last 20 years. I have friends and family all over, and I've got friends that I've described my property to out there who, I agree with Larry, it's very beautiful, very tranquil, very private. But I don't, I am not able to occupy the property all the time, but I do have friends that wanted, that want to come in and stay and see the property and explore the Black Hills and haven't had the opportunity, they're from Florida and California and Texas and Canada. Yep. If they were going to come and stay, they, I've told them they can come and stay for free, but they refused to do that because I own the property and they feel like they are financially responsible to provide me some compensation for staying there. So literally, I've had two groups, I live in Hartford, South Dakota, I've had two groups from Hartford, South Dakota, one being Knights of Columbus, and the other was a group of ladies that were coming out for a Right to Life convention in Rapid City, and I offered to let them stay in my home for free, and both of them groups came back and said, we're not going to do it because, like I said, you own the property and you should be compensated. So they ended up not staying here, staying there, they ended up staying in a motel for the evening, because they didn't want to put me out. Like I said, we are looking at, my wife and I are looking at retirement, and our plan is to occupy that home in our retirement in, in three to five years, so I have personally invested a lot of time and money into that place, I think. I think, um, trying to improve the outside looks of the property and also on the interior. But, um, let's see. I had one, um, friend of mine, a dear friend of mine who took me out elk hunting in Laramie, Wyoming. And if I, I said, "If there's any way I can ever repay you, just let me know." And so his daughter, uh, received a job offer at Monument Hospital as a nurse. So he called me on the phone one day and said she would like to rent the property from you until she finds another place to live. And I said, "Well, she can come and stay here for free, um, but I can't rent it out to you because legally I can't do that. I do not have a conditional use permit to be able to allow her to stay there." And, um, so, um, she ended up, long story short, she ended up not staying there as her, um, her dad said, "If I let her stay there for free, she'll never find a place to live in Rapid City." So, um, so she didn't stay there either. And so, um, you know, I just, there were, there is, as Larry said, there was another short-term rental in the area. So, um, it was kind of a positive or, um, conclusion of mine that one short-term rental was there already. So I haven't had, I'm, my wife and I stayed in, uh, short-term rentals across the United States. I stay and then when I travel, um, and I honor all the rules that are posted because if you don't, then you should be reported to Airbnb. And I can't, I can't swear and testify what other people have done. Uh, I just know what I do. I respect people's rules and I live under those rules. So I wasn't really very prepared to talk today either because I thought I was talking the 22nd, but now most, most of what I'd have to say then is, is up. I apologize for not having the sign posted on time. That was my fault. So had the sign been posted on time, this would've been the date of the hearing. I have postponed it till the 22nd of May to make it, uh, a timeframe that would meet within my travel schedule, so... With that, I guess I would conclude my, uh, my points of order. But I just don't see where, um, I, I don't wanna say, but if, uh, yeah, I don't see where it's impacted my value of my property at all, anything out there, with it going up 200% the last two years, so... With that, I'll conclude.
Thank you, Stacy. Questions for Stacy?
Yeah, Stacy, didn't you, uh...
Sorry, that can't be done.
Oh, I'd like to talk...
No, this question's from the commission. If you have a question for Stacy, you can come up and reintroduce yourself, Larry.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Stacy, do you plan to advertise on a, if, if, let's say this is approved, do you plan to advertise it on Airbnb or do you plan to just rent to friends, family?
I, my total purpose of this is to run it to friends and family. I think I have enough friends and family that are interested in staying there. And, uh, like I said, I just can't do it. I mean, imagine how mad Larry would've been today if, if I'd had people staying there and causing problems and not being licensed by Pennington County to be able to do the same. And then to try to appear to try to get permission. I'm more proactive and that's, uh, the whole purpose of this is, um, I plan on managing it myself and living in it myself someday, so... But I would manage it and only let people in there that, basically at this point, that have contacted me and, and, um, that I know are not gonna tear up and ruin my house.
Thank you.
I have one, uh, Stacy. Do you understand the recommendation of the staff at this point in time to continue? I'll read it to you so that you understand before we make a motion. Staff recommends to continue and it's your conditional use permit 23-11 to May 22nd, '23. And you understand that?
Yep.
Thank you.
I've, I've taken the time off to be able to appear personally for this meeting. The only reason I'm not out there today is because I didn't think it was gonna be discussed this long.
Understood. All right. Yes, you have to come up and reintroduce. However, I'm gonna ask Larry first. Larry did have a question. And you do have, it's just a point of order. You have to reintroduce yourself for the...
Oh, Larry Luxinger, 13046 Sonquist Lane. Stacy, you said you, you've only owned the house for four or five years?
Um, I didn't go back and research the exact date that we bought it, but I was working for, um, Monument Health at the time.
It's been considerably longer than four or five years, correct?
Um, like I said, I, I don't know exactly how long it's...
Okay, that's fine. Um, and it's my understanding that suburban residential properties, you don't need a conditional use permit for long-term rentals, for leases? Wasn't that property leased?
I'm gonna, Larry, I'm gonna have the planning. Megan? For normal rental, not short-term rental, Megan?
Megan Talmadge Planner, long-term rentals do not require a conditional use permit.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Larry?
Mr. Chair, can I get a clarification on that? What constitutes long-term rental?
My question is what constitutes vacation rental?
Yeah.
Megan Talmadge Planner, it's 28 consecutive days or longer is long-term rental.
Just wanna make sure that was clear. Thank you.
And during the time you've owned that property, hasn't it been leased?
Yes, it's been rented.
So you could just rent the property?
It's been rented on a long-term lease.
And you could do that now? You don't need a conditional use permit?
No, but my wife and I plan on using it and I can't do that when, they can't, the renters have the right to peacefully live in the property. And if I wanna come out and use my own property, I can't do that.
Okay.
Schedule, when I'm the manager, I can schedule one day a month, one week a month, uh, so my wife and I can still come out and use the property when we wanna come out using.
You know, I've, I've stayed at friends' houses that told me, you know, I don't, I don't want you to give me anything.
Larry, I'm gonna, I, I asked you for questions. I, I don't want to take any other...
Stacy, have you ever stayed at anybody's house where they didn't, they didn't own anybody's property? Where they said, "I don't want, I don't want anything from you. You can stay there for free." And have you ever left $200 on the counter when you left?
No.
Oh, I have.
Stayed at people's houses for free, but I've never left money on the counter because they were friends, so...
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself just for the record, Celeste.
Celeste Lechance, and we reside on the opposite side adjacent to this property that we are discussing. Um, my question is, Stacy, we have a long-term rental that I have hired a local management company to oversee to make sure that our community is safe and the residents that live there are not impacted in any way, shape, or form by our long-term tenant who has been there since 2020. My question for you is, you, I, I don't know where you currently reside, but we live in Hot Springs, South Dakota at this time, which is only an hour away. Yet I hire a local, local management company to make sure that the, the residence and the property is well-maintained. Where are you located and how do you expect to manage your property and oversee if, if you're not going to be there during these short-term rentals? Who will be overseeing what is going on at your property?
Um, I'd like to come back and say a couple of things. I have, you know, I didn't know if I needed to make this public or not, but I have cameras strategically placed on my property so I can see all the way around my property, from the, uh, front road on Sonquist Lane all the way back to the creek. They're kinda disguised in the property so that people can't walk up and see them. Um, and I can keep a very close eye on my property because I get a notification anytime somebody walks on my property. In fact, I get deer notifications or deer walking on my property. But, um, so I, I can keep a very close eye on my property and it also has microphones so I can talk back through that, those microphones, to whoever might be causing a problem. I don't have to live right next door to address the issue of having, uh, property manager managing your property and keeping it safe. At one time, that property was rented and I had a property manager there. And, um, it was seven months before I could get the, um, renter out because of legal, uh, requirements from the state of South Dakota. And the property manager finally told me to, if they would leave on their own, to just get him out of there. And so that's what happened is I found out there was a problem and we asked him to get him out, but because of the legal requirements, it's not like you can go there one day and say, "Move your stuff out tomorrow." You have to give them notification to be able to get out of the property. And so that experience wasn't very good either, even with having a professional manager in the city of Rapid City managing the property.
And, and so you're going to... Uh, sorry, continue.
So I, I've had, um, unpleasant experiences with a property manager too.
So you think that, but first, may I ask where you and your, uh, wife will be physically located during these short-term rentals?
I don't know that that's really relevant to the conversation, but we live in Hartford, South Dakota, which is close to Sioux Falls.
I think it's fairly relevant if there are some issues that are impacting the residents of the community. Secondly, uh, the cameras, I'm not sure how a camera is better than...
Celeste, I gotta interrupt you here. He's been advised that he wasn't be prepared to go through item by item. Like Larry, when he came here, he didn't realize that he was gonna have an opportunity to speak either. The recommendation from the planning department is to continue this. When we get into these sort of detailed questions prior to the motion that will either approve or disapprove this sort of thing, that's, people come more prepared to, to sort... Play, go ahead.
Um, I've never been to a meeting and I'm not a public speaker, so my apologies. Um, this will be continued to a later date and we will be able to have a packet of information to present?
Right. The recommendation is that no other action than a continuance is being done here. And the applicant, uh, I believe, re-notification and then the sign is up now. So those two things are in process.
Okay, understand. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Celeste.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue conditional use permit CU 23-11 to the May 22nd, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Megan?
Moved in second to continue conditional use permit per staff's recommendation, CU 23-11 to the May 22nd, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a suggestion for Larry and Celeste. If they have questions for Stacy, they can get his contact information, I believe, from planning and they should ask him directly instead of having that kind of back and forth at a planning commission meeting.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just reiterate, any evidence that you have of anything that you wanna present, it's always good to have it in a packet that's presented prior to the meeting so that the planning commission can review it and see what you have. If you present it here today while we're talking, we may not have any kind of time to read it, so then it may not even be considered in that decision. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Celeste. Um, Travis, um, and what he's saying is the truth. When you submit these things, they become part of the public record. Certainly you standing up there speaking on them. But if the commissioners can't ask questions because they don't feel knowledgeable on the item that you're presenting, it's difficult to get that part and the reactions on the public record. And that way also the applicant has an opportunity to see it as part of the public record the same way their submissions become part of the public record. So that's a very important process in this review. So that's all I have. So any other comments from the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13.
Good morning. Um, Kelsey Roush, Planning Department. Item number 13 is a special consideration to the Trailhead Village Planning Development, PU 2303. Is this open? The applicant, um, wanted to place a, a new storage unit on the property. This is located at 5479 Savannah Street and the property is 0.16 acres. Um, in doing the research for the, for this, um, staff report, staff found that, um, the applicant's proposal would be located within the eight-foot utility and minor drainage easement. PCU wanted a seven-foot setback. Um, he would have to go through the city of Rapid City to, um, vacate a portion or all of the utility and minor drainage easement. And he also would've had to obtain an approved Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment to allow a shed to be located in the front yard of the property. Um, and speaking with the applicant, um, the amount of time and money it would be to get, go through that whole process and the likelihood of getting approval for all three of those, um, things would, he just decided he didn't wanna go through it and he has withdrawn his application, so...
Now that's 14?
13.
13, excuse me. I was trying to get some of these lined up because I have a question on both 13 and 14 for you.
13.
All right, I've gotta back up then. I understand what you're saying. Sorry. There we go. Okay, and, and this kinda ties, Kelsey, my question is this, and I realize we're withdrawing this. And I thought, and it affects the next one as well. I came out with, uh, that's the point 16. Oh, all right, sorry. It's 1415. I'm lost. When they start tying them together and there's an error built into them, I wanna make sure the errors comes out so that we can get it handled. Go ahead. 13, no, I have no problems with what you're proposing. Any questions for Kelsey?
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna make a motion to withdraw this application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to withdraw the application, our item number 13, which is PU 23-03, which is a special, special consideration, uh, planned unit development amendment.
Negative, that's, uh, it's, would be PU D 7902 if I...
Nope, 78, or 2303.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I was on the wrong line, sorry.
Any discussion from the audience, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead. Do you want me, since I goofed up the whole thing, do you want me to just tell you what my question, my problem with the, because it did cause a continuance for the last time I brought this same problem up? If you look at the acreages on number 14, it's 6.18.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
All right, I gotta get clarification because now you're talking about 1414 of CA 2303, which is the number I just said. We were talking about item 13. And what I have in front of me, unless I've got some bad information, is PU D 79-02. I just wanna make sure the motion is rec, uh, recognizing the meeting minutes correctly.
Okay.
The motion is correct to, to, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, if you look at the lot size, 6.18, and we are not discussing these together, I want you to know so that you can go ahead. If you look at the drawing, the drawing contains 7.868. And if we go on to the next item, and that concerned me even more, 7.2 plus or minus. So that was my hangup. And last time I brought that up, we did have to have it recorrected because it involves an official drawing that's being submitted. Go ahead.
So, Coesack Environmental Planner, so items 14 and 15, one's a, uh, one's a comprehensive plan amendment. It only involves one lot. So that's where that seven point, or 6.18 comes in.
Okay.
The plot involves, so, uh, I left this map the same. So it involves this little portion to the east.
My only question was whether, then you're comfortable with this so that we don't end it up getting all the way to the end and discussing this and then we've gotta continue it because it's not?
Correct, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
You're comfortable?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we discuss items 14 and 15 as one and vote on them separately.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion. Now, okay, the only item that is not similar that I can find is the acreages that are on... Discussion. Now, okay, the only item that is not similar that I can find is the acreages that are on that. So that similarity should be noted just for discussion purposes. Is there discussion on this motion? It does take a two-thirds majority to do that. No discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You may discuss item fourteen and fifteen. They will be acted upon separately.
So item uh Coesack Environmental Planner, item fourteen is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash zero three. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from ranchette district to rural residential district. The app land owner of free rent rentals LLC, the agent is Davis Engineering. He's in the audience if there's any questions. Location of property is two-three-seven zero-seven Burke Fork Road, involves six point one eight acres. Current zoning is ranchette district or current zoning is agriculture district. Sorry, that's a typo. With the existing land use residential, access is off Burke Fork Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So future land use is ranchette, requires a five-acre lot size with a maximum density of point two, twenty-five foot setbacks from all property lines, agriculture and residential prominent land uses in that zoning designation. And utilities are private. The proposed zoning is rural residential, which requires a three-acre lot size. And again, there's another typo. It says one, but it's actually point three-three uh for maximum single-family resident density. Setbacks are also twenty-five feet from all property lines, predominant land use is residential and utilities are public or private. Uh, surrounding zoning within one-half mile, to the north you have open space, to the south you have planning development, agriculture district, rural residential and open space. To the east you have open space, rural residential and agriculture district. Into the west you have planning and development, open space and agriculture district. Future land use within one-half mile, which will be the map on the right, is to the north is open space, to the south is planning and development, rural residential, open space and ranchette. To the east you have open space, ranchette, rural residential, to the west you have open space, ranchette and planning and development. Predominant land uses within one-half mile in all directions are agriculture and residential. The property is served by Burke Fork Road, which is approximately twenty to twenty-four foot wide gravel road and a forty-foot wide private access easement. Infrastructure will be private water and sewer. This was rather offered in your department review. There were no objections or concerns ever received. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into two lots. Layout plan LPL twenty-three dash zero four was approved by staff on March second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, rezone RG twenty-three dash zero six to rezone agr from agriculture district to rural residential district is to is agenda item fifteen. That will be continued to the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting as the agent did not send the notice letters to all the required property owners. On October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, the board of commissioners denied comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash nineteen and rezone twenty-two dash twenty-five to change the future land use and the zoning to low-density residential district. That was at the recommendation of the planning commission as well. Rural residential district um uses are single-family residents. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with the request. This appears to be in harmony with the existing land use within the area and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure and the majority of properties within one-half mile are residential lots. And just a little act, a little more history, the applicant originally came in when he was doing low-density residential, de-subdivided that those properties into three lots. The planning commission and the board had issues with three lots. Um, they were more comfortable with two lots, which kept the zoning to rural residential district, so that's what the applicants have come back with. So with that, staff is going to recommend approval for item fourteen, comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash zero three. And for item fifteen, which is rezone twenty-three dash zero six, to rezone seven point two plus acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Staff recommends to continue rezone RG twenty-three dash zero six to the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting as the agent did not send the notice letters to all the required property owners.
Very good. Questions for Cody? And I see that the the agent has a request to speak. And you're comfortable with those acreages, just for the record?
Yes.
So I'm gonna ask him the same question. I'm sure you can get me on the right page.
Sure.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, Mr. Davis? Please introduce yourself just for the record.
My name is Ron Davis, Davis Engineering. I'd like to hand this out here in a second. I have five of them, maybe a couple of you can share.
I'll make sure mine gets to Jerry for the record, Ron. You got that, Jerry?
Mine, so I'm gonna have to do this.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make sure you have it when I turn in the speaker request forms, Jerry. You are allowed to speak on both the items at the same time per our motion.
I am doing that, I think, yeah. The first sheet you see in front of you is is our subject property lots A and B on the left. The dashed line goes to the right of that at five hundred feet is the notification for a rezone and a comp plan. They're both five hundred feet. The little dashed in your hatch in area there is uh Gary and Lanningy Salam, Salmon. And they were not notified, but they are required to be notified on both. So if you look at the next sheet, and these are all lists, but uh we did this in September and October and we were denied because of the three lots, so we went back to two lots. In September, we got a list for the rezone, which included Mr. Salmon. We got a request for the comp plan amendment, which included Mr. Salmon, and the letters were sent out to them and they had no objections at that time in September. The next list is the last, the list we just got and we just sent the notifications out for on uh April eighth. And if you'll notice, the rezone list has Mr. Salmon on it. If you look at the comp plan list, he's not on there. He was left out of the list.
Okay.
Okay, I got these two last, two left simultaneously by email. Since I had done it before and uh both of them were the same, were identical, I grabbed the first one. I happened to get the comp list with the air on it and I sent the letters out. And so it it looks to me like the air is here with the planning and not with me because I and I should have checked both both of the lists, but I didn't because it was the same as before, so.
Cody, explain how our computer comes up with those answers.
So Coesack Environmental Planner, the request before was to change both of those lots from agriculture to low-density residential. When you go to rural residential, this the, oh, excuse me, sorry. The small lot to the east is already rural residential. You can't change the future land use to rural residential if it's already rural residential. So that lot's not included in that in the comp plan, but it's included in the rezone. So since that lot's not included, Mr. Salmon, as Mr. Davis stated, was not included in the list. So but he was included in the rezone because you're rezoning both of those lots. And those uh lists were sent in two separate emails, one labeled as rezone, one labeled as comprehensive plan amendment.
There's more of a
I guess I don't understand that.
Legal thing here. We don't want to get down the road, Ron, and have the thing blow up on you, so. So it's basically per state statute is our definition. We don't define how they
I understand that.
Issue them out. So our computer apparently uh caught that, did not catch what you're talking about.
No, so it 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 did. So when you
It did, yeah.
The comprehensive plan amendment had twelve, twelve people on it. Because when you go five hundred feet from this, I I I don't know, I don't have the list, it could take you to this lot right here. When you have this, this little portion included, you go five hundred feet from that line, so it could kick this lot into it that didn't require
All right.
The comprehensive plan amendment. That appears to be what happened. The the proper lists were sent to Mr. Davis. It just wasn't, one had twelve, one had thirteen. It appears the twelve one was opened and sent out and the thirteen, the thirteenth person for the rezone was not sent. There's nothing really we can do about it. It's per state statute, per our ordinance, you have to mail them certified to all property owners within five hundred feet. That wasn't done, so this has to be continued.
Okay, and re-advertised.
Correct, for the May twenty-second meeting.
I wanted to make sure that was clear. That's one of the critical things in there too, Ron, is the advertising. It it also opens the door for challenge if that's not done, so. I can understand what you're saying, but I understand what Cody's saying too. In other words, you thought you were doing the right thing and it didn't turn out the right thing.
Why in September did was this same lot on the list and I mailed a letter then at the same time?
That one, I couldn't tell you the answer to. I'm sure Cody can.
I'll I'll explain it again. So you're, you have two lots on the rezone.
Yes.
You have one lot on the comprehensive plan amendment because you're re you're trying to change the comp plan for this one from ranchette to rural residential. This lot, this little tiny piece right here, this other little lot to the west, is already rural residential. So it's not included in the comprehensive plan amendment. Therefore, your five hundred feet for the comprehensive plan amendment starts here, so it could take you to here. With the rezone, it's both of these lots, so the five hundred feet starts from here, which could take it to this lot, which includes one extra person.
Okay.
If you look at this drawing, this light line inside of my two la lots is the lot line he's talking about. This little piece over here is separate. This is the two lots, that light line right there. If you take that five hundred feet, move it to that point and swing it through there, you still end up with this lot in that in that area. So it should have been notified, but it wasn't on the list for me to notify. And I simply mailed the letters to who were on the list like I always do, mailed them in time, but signs up everything. So how do we handle that? They they I know, I know, it's a technicality, okay?
Versus Cody saying it, I'll I'll take it from a commissioner. You have a a glitch here, whether it's a a a sound factual glitch or not, certainly you two disagree on that. But we have a statute either way to meet in the state. And as the state statute's met in regards to notice and uh even the publication of this, what we're meeting here so that other people can show up if they cared to disagree with all of us. I guess what you're saying is you 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 want to stay where you at and chance it. I wouldn't chance it, Ron. Okay, that would be my advice. I'd just bite the bullet and say, unfortunately, that's the way it goes. The state is also going to spend additional, or the county is going to spend additional money publishing this.
Yeah.
So it's not like it's, it it may not be worth the size of the bump in the road.
Well, the publication, the letters are different than the publication. Publication goes out in the paper. Everybody that lives up there can see that. Everybody in the county can see it.
Chair, may I speak?
You shouldn't have to read, you shouldn't have to republizize. They've all seen it. They all know about it. The only thing that happened is one of these didn't get a letter and they didn't complain anything last time. So it's a technicality that I would rather see this get approved and get done with right now instead of, I'm willing to take that chance.
Thank you. Just don't, if that's all you want to say, you can sit down, but otherwise you can certainly stay up, Ron, until. Uh, Megan, go ahead, please.
Megan Kruger with the state's attorney. So it's not a technicality, it's a state statute requirement and there is case law which indicates that there must be strict compliance with all notice requirements because it violates the due process clause if it's not done. Um, so if this is approved without that notice being done, we know it's wrong, then this is not a valid decision.
I would request then that you guys approve this or continue it not requiring us to pay the additional hundred and forty-four dollar advertisement fee again. I want you to waive that at least.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Understood. Thank you. Discussion. Now we have to go back one at a time to to act. So we're on item, agenda item number fourteen, Cody. And staff recommends approval of the comprehensive plan amendment.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve CA twenty-three dash oh three per staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second to approve uh comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash oh three per staff's recommendation. Discussion from the audience. From the commission, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to address one thing before motions made on that. I don't believe this board, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this board cannot waive any of those fees. Those have to be appealed to the board of commission. So if we approve or we do the the continue and then they need to re-advertise and everything, there's no way he can do that without having to pay that those fees and then he has to come to the board of commission to plead his case if he'd like that money returned, just to put that out there for the public.
Correct, and I believe that only applies to penalty fees. I don't know about actual application fees because that's part of the application fee. Is that, but that'd be something that would be addressed at the at the board if we can or not.
Cody, it's been my understanding the same as Travis is that whenever it comes comes to anything to do with fees, the planning commission has no status other than recommendation, uh, if they even desire to do so. Uh, they don't have the right to remove or vacate fees. So uh, that is a difficult request by Mr. Davis for us, but it is one that can be addressed when it goes to the commissioners, I guess.
So, Mr. Chair, I would take staff's recommendation to continue rezone RG twenty-three oh six to the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Moved in second to approve rezone RG twenty-three dash oh six per staff's recommendation. Discussion, discussion from the audience. From the commission, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On to item number sixteen.
I recommend that we combine sixteen and seventeen for purposes of discussion, but vote on them separately.
Second.
Moved in second to combine discussion purposes for item, agenda item number sixteen and agenda item number seventeen. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all, uh, it does take a two-thirds vote. Uh, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That was unanimous, so. On to item sixteen and seventeen. Cody, you're familiar with it. You may discuss both items at the same time.
Okay, so item sixteen is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash zero four is to change the future land use from agriculture district to rural residential district. And agenda item seventeen is rezone RG twenty-three dash zero seven. This is rezone four acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant and land owner for both is Christie Decker. Location of the property is east of the intersection of one hundred and fifty-sixth Avenue and Highway fourteen sixteen. On Highway fourteen sixteen involves four four acres. Current zoning district is agriculture, existing land land use is vacant. Access is off highways fourteen sixteen and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So current zoning and future land use are uh agriculture district. They require a ten-acre lot size, maximum single-family resident density, dwelling unit per acre is zero point one. It requires twenty-five foot setbacks from all property lines. Predominant land use within the area is agriculture and residential and utilities are private. The proposed zoning and comprehensive plan change would be the rural residential, which requires a three-acre lot size, a maximum single-family resident density of point three-three. Setbacks are also twenty-five feet from all property lines, predominant land use is residential and utilities are public or private. Uh, we also look at surrounding zoning districts within within one-half mile. Uh, it is agriculture district for both future land use and agri and current zoning. It's all ag within one-half mile. Access is off Highway fourteen sixteen, which is a twenty-four foot wide paved road with paved shoulders. It's a hundred foot uh wide public right-of-way. Infrastructure will be private water and sewer. This was rather offered in your department in the departmental review and there were no objections or concerns that were received. The applicants planted a four-acre partial through the city of New Underwood. Uh, New Underwood did not contact the uh Pennington County Planning Department or tell the applicant applicant to contact the planning department regarding zoning. So the four-acre lot was created uh without the proper zoning, so this rezone would be to fix and uh would be to fix a violation. Uh, rezone RG twenty-three dash zero seven is agenda item sixteen on this agenda. Rural residential district denotes areas of large lot residential development in natural or agriculture areas with single-family residents and agriculture uses. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with the existing land use within the area and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. So with that, staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash zero four and rezone RG twenty-three dash zero seven. So with that, staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA 23 dash zero four and rezone RZ 23 dash zero seven.
Questions for Cody. On either item. Thank you, Cody. Well, now we must go back to the individual item, as you all well know. Discussion. Anybody got a question? Chair would address the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd approve recommend approval of CA 23 oh four.
Second.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation. Uh, comprehensive amendment 23 dash zero four. Discussion. Discussion from the audience. From the commission, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Number 17.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve RZ 23 dash oh seven per staff recommendation.
Moved in second to approve rezone 23 dash oh seven per staff's recommendation. Discussion. I do have a question for you, Cody. And I was being lazy. It was late. But you kind of referred to it in in your deal that the the zoning thing refers to allowing a residential lot in an agriculture like this. Is this because a family is blocking off or are they? Is that what that is about?
Yeah, so that uh, when it says rural residential district denotes areas of large lot residential and development and natural and agriculture areas. That comes specifically from um our comprehensive plan or our comprehensive plan viewed to 2040. Um, it's to have large lot residentials in these agriculture areas for families that split land off. Um, or or different things like that. And and talking with the applicant, she would have plotted 10 acres had she been told that she needed to maintain 10 acres. But she went through this whole process, came into our office to get a um, an address and a building permit. And she couldn't because New Underwood never told her to come talk to us. And New Underwood never informed us that there was a plat in in their planning jurisdiction for our zoning. So she's trying to correct correct an issue that was was created.
Okay. That's what I thought that, and I'm sure that it refers to there in that regard. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. On to item number 18. Not 19, excuse me.
18.
18.
18, yeah, I was right the first time. I've got a lot of papers I'm shuffling shuffling around today, folks. Thank you.
Uh, Kobe Sacramento Planner. Uh, item 18 is vacation plat VP 23 dash zero three. It's to vacate notes on the plat for lot one, block one, and Mountain Meadows subdivision. The applicant landowners Paul and Ella Windy. The location is located, it's located off Eleanor Drive. Involve 3.02 acres. Current zoning is planning a development district. Existing land use is vacant. Again, access is off Eleanor Drive, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, given the lot is vacant of any structures, a little subdivision history. The Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL uh oh eight twenty with 15 conditions. Condition number five stated that prior to applying preliminary plat, that the applicant provide engineered plans to meet fire flow of not less than 1,000 gallons per minute for two lots and to offer or offer alternatives to be reviewed and approved by the county fire coordinator. On December 2nd, 2008, the Board of Commissioners approved preliminary plat oh eight twenty with 16 conditions. Condition number three stated that prior to finding plots in middle, a note be placed on the plat to read prior to obtaining a building permit for residents on the property. Two suitable onsite wastewater systems areas be identified and accompanied with percolation testing soil profile hole. Soil profiles must be must show proper soil separation and obtained as outlined in State Administrative Rules 74530115. Condition five states that prior to the final final plots in middle, a note be placed on the plat that reads onsite wastewater systems be located on any of the properties and designed by certified professional engine certified or engineer licensed plumber. This request was routed around for indoor department review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. The applicants are requesting to vacate notes 13 and 14 for lot one, block one, and Mountain Meadows Estates. Those are the notes that are on the plat up there. Those 13 and 14 state that after six the after the 65th building permit have been issued, charity for increasing the water storage is guaranteed. And that prior to the 80th building permit, water storage increased to 95, 95,000 gallons for the Rushmore Ranch or Mountain Meadows subdivision. Uh, subdivision regulation variance SV 23 dash zero three will be heard at the May 2nd, 2023 Board of Adjustment meeting to waive the requirement to increase the water storage. That request goes with this request. Uh, four other properties within Mountain Meadows Estates subdivision have had notes 13 and 14 vacated. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of vacation of plat VP 23 dash zero three with two conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
My my confusion on this, I I see what we're being asked to do, but then in analysis of C, you talk about the Board of Adjustments getting in on this.
So when so um, the notes on the were put on the plat to meet the sub regs, to meet the subdivision regulations at the time. So if you waive those, if you vacate those notes off the plat, that property is no longer meeting the subdivision regulations. So they have to uh obtain a sub reg variance to not increase water storage for fire for fire protection and uh residential use.
And this would also cover other future things too, the the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, yes. So and it's just for this lot. So this item will be heard after the the sub reg variance. So if the Board of Adjustment doesn't approve that subdivision regulation variance, then staff would recommend to deny this this request. As if you don't get that variance, then you can't vacate these notes because then you have a property that's not meeting the subdivision regulations. So these two kind of go hand in hand, but the sub regs will be taken care of first at that board meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Cody, can you kind of give a a little bit of a history of the property? I don't need you to get all the properties, but you kind of give them an idea of what we've done over the I know because I know several of these properties come to us and we do that. Just kind of give them an idea of how we walk through it and what we've done from the Board of Commission.
Yeah, so for the for the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment has virtually for the four for the four previous requests agreed to vacate um these notes and to grant this or grant the sub reg variance. If the applicants are willing to put in a fire sprinkler system in the house, the applicants are, they actually submitted a building permit. That's what kept this off for for them. Um, that already showed that they knew about those requirements. Um, and usually the people come in too and request the septic notes be vacated off the plat. The applicant just accepted those notes. Um, so they're trying to meet all as many of those notes as they can. Um, it's just a lot to ask one property owner to increase water storage for an entire subdivision.
And so just to put it out there. Oh, yeah, I was gonna say just, Mr. Chair, it's just because we don't think it's right for any one property owner to have to take on the cost of putting in a 95,000 gallon uh storage reserve. So that's why we've opted to do it with as long as they're willing to put in their own um sprinkler system. And I think there's a storage capacity for their home for that, right? There's a.
Yeah, there's a there's a separate tank that I believe is usually the capacity of like 300 gallons. Um, they they have to get it designed and uh meet fire flows and everything, so.
Cody, my only question was kind of a question. Is this something that we should have as a condition under there because it all dovetails together? What do you or is there a reason you don't want that as a condition?
So the to add a condition that they get the sub reg variance, we we could certainly add that. Uh, I think staff just didn't add that because Board of uh, at the board meetings, variances are heard before regular items, so that item's already taken care of. So if the board doesn't.
Previous go through already.
Yep, and if that variance doesn't get approved, you can't approve the vacation notes on on the plat anyways, so we can't put it in there.
Are you comfortable with that, Mike?
Yeah, kind of a clue convoluted way of looking at it. Yes, I understand what he's saying.
How about the rest of the commission? Mike brought this to me before the meeting, whether that should be sitting there as as looked into, and I said it looks like it could be a condition and so. All right, everybody's comfortable without it being a condition. Okay, thank you, Cody. Anyone here in the audience here to comment on this? Chair will address the motion.
I move we approve VP 23 dash zero three as recommended by staff.
Second.
Moved in second to approve VP 23 dash oh three with two conditions per staff's recommendation.
Who seconded that?
Kevin, I think. Jim, Jim, did he?
Okay.
Discussion from the audience. Discussion from the commission, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. On to item number 19. I got that right, right? Thanks, guys. Now, I'm gonna, we do have someone on Zoom on this. I just want to make sure, we try to do this at the front to make sure everybody that's on Zoom can either hear us and we can hear them. Uh, do we have someone on Zoom on on item number 19? Maybe they've got it on mute. I hope you can hear us. If you do, your screen is on mute right now, so you may want to hit that button. Thank you. We're gonna go move ahead then, Brittany, and present item number 19, please.
So item number 19 is ordinance amendment oh eight twenty three dash zero one for Pennington County to amend section 319 vacation home rental to amend and supersede the existing section 319 vacation home rental of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we work on the noted items contained in the memo dated April 24th, 23 from Charles Johnson before starting on discussion of any revisions to the proposed draft ordinance amendment 23 oh one.
Second.
Moved in second to um address the memo that I had published for all of you prior to this meeting that have noted discussion items. And um, for the record, just let me throw in a few things. These are items that I put together. There are certainly others and and US commissioners have noted others. But what I wanted to get it on the record that we did discuss these in advance that way. If an action is taken, the wording of that action can be properly added to the final draft. And I think US commissioners have voiced the same interest that we were looking at one final document. And the only other thing I had in a way of discussion would be I have no problem with discussing these in any order that you would see fit. I just happen to list these and I should I put numbers. I probably should have put letters. But I have no, uh, you can select the item uh that you care to discuss, whether it's on this list or under the title of others. Any other discussion that you'd like to weigh in on before we address the motion?
Mr. Chair, just for the for the minutes and for the public, would would you read the items?
Sure, I will. Uh, and I'll just read the preface to it. The chair would like to discuss the first seven items listed below before starting discussion of any revisions to the proposed draft ordinance 23 dash oh one vacation home rental. Item number one is one acre lot size requirement. Number two is parking. Number three is transfer. Number four is local contact. Number five is density. Number six is moratorium. Number seven is other items.
Thank you.
Audience can weigh in and in on discussion on this too. We're in discussion on the motion. Would you care to? Anyone? Yes, come forward. Please introduce yourself for the record and go from there.
My name's Kristen Bennett. Excuse me. And Brittany, I might have um written down wrong. I was here under um 21, something from the public.
Yes, it is. It is 19. I'll change it to 21, Kristen.
Yeah, well, but I can also speak to number 19 because I've been kind of involved in that process. Um, the group of short term rental owners that's sort of coalescing to try and help the state come up with easier ways of doing things is not finished with their uh draft revisions of the ordinance. And I don't think anyone needs to live or die on that hill today. Um, but I will say that the Board of Directors is still organizing themselves. They have some draft bylaws in place. They're going to incorporate in the state so that our goal of making everything easier for the commissioners, the public, the neighbors, and the and the owners will be what we hope it will be. And I've reminded the group, I'm not on the board. I'm just a nonprofit advisor, right? For national and statewide groups that try to make this process better and easier. Um, I have encouraged them to look at this organization as a marathon and not a sprint. This organization is not formed specifically to oppose this ordinance or to take on Pennington County. Um, that's just the topic of de jour, right? Like, so there are these hot topics. Most of the group feels the same way about them. Uh, the group is still forming, and with every group I've ever founded or advised, there is a period of like getting organized. Who are the leaders? What are we here for? How do we develop the relationships with the stakeholders, right? So there's nothing prepared to present to you in writing, although numerous people have been contributing to a a shared Google Doc with some suggestive revisions. So that's all I would have to say on number 19, which is where I think you have me down. But I was really kind of here on my own personal matter, which is completely separate. So um, what I would say is just speaking from the heart, the short term rental owners are not um convening to do battle with the county and battle with the neighbors who are sometimes seeming opposed to short term rentals in general. Um, the organization is a consensus building group that's trying to find a better way because where I see the commissioners stuck, the planning department stuck, the neighbors stuck is just in this ongoing like storytelling, horror stories for and against. And honestly, how is anyone going to get anywhere this way? And it's not just Pennington County. This is going to affect um Sioux Falls, Aberdeen here. So there really would be a lot of value in getting some sort of standard precedence in place. Um, and honestly, the state organization not existing until now is kind of surprising to me that Pennington County would be leading the way for the whole state in this kind of effort. So I just want to say I don't think this group is formed as, you know, taking up arms against anybody. It's really to make things better, more efficient and easier. So I don't know if anyone else is here to talk on item 19. Um, I wasn't even prepared to speak on it. I just accidentally told Brittany, right? Because I wasn't sure. She knew that I was here for a public matter.
Been published that it would come up today, but this memo has certainly revised that. But those people that were at the hearings had some idea that a memo of this sort was coming forward as well.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And again, the group has been working on a draft, but that they had hoped would be ready for your review. But I'll give my personal opinion. Again, I'm not speaking for the group and I'm not even a board member. I don't feel that the majority of the ordinance is unlivable. Um, I'm a short term rental owner. Right now, the ordinance exactly as it is, exactly as it would be, does me no harm at all. Um, the one thing that does me harm personally is is that this needs to be an administrative process as the planning department has suggested because I feel like it puts the commissioners at risk, puts the county at risk of making decisions based on the opinions instead of the law. So I'll just I'll say that and then stop and ask if anyone has questions on 19, which I was not prepared to address today. I'm here on a personal matter.
Questions for Kristen. Thank you, Kristen. I appreciate it.
And then I don't know if you want to swap me, have me go back. I was.
I gotta hold until that item comes up, but I was going to make a recommendation after we cleared the table of what we're doing right now.
Sounds good. So then I'm on 21 under public. I was from public. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on addressing the motion on the table in regards to the memo I published to each and every one of you? Do you think it's broad enough, I guess? I I want to make sure every one of you in your own way, with the exception of the Board of Commissioner, that's a floating representative liaison representative, indicated that you had some uh items that you cared to discuss and that we've never had an opportunity to discuss in front of the public, as well as the public weigh in on our discussion. And I felt that uh doing it this way prior to this, as I said, would allow that if we took some action in that regard, there was time for our people to properly write it up and put it and include it so that we can review it prior to the final uh draft.
Mr. Chair, I got a question for you.
So, the draft is before us, as I look at the agenda item, it says to amend section three nineteen vacation home rental. Basically, y'all seen a couple of versions of this, it's been changed and stuff over some time period. And is this the most recent changes, all the yellow, or is the most recent changes that y'all are wanting to discuss today? I mean, obviously, any other ones, but is that kind of what I'm understanding?
Can I throw in one more thing? It's listed as item three, it's actually nineteen, but just go ahead.
Brittany Moller, Planning Director, this is the final version that was done by the committee.
By the committee, okay.
By the committee, so this was their basically submitted. So, that's, that's where this comes from.
Okay. So, there's no expectation that this is going to be approved today, that we're going to start now working through the Planning Commission's recommendations and taking in feedback and things of that nature?
Right, my understanding is that this is just the committee's submitted, and then the Planning Commission discusses the proposal.
I do have another speaker request for him, Rita. Rita? Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, sir, come forward. Oh, you could have, we could have lived without that, but it's nice, please introduce yourself, just for the record, you're speaking on. Okay, the motion on the table right now is in regards to the memo so that we can open discussion items from the memo. All right, thank you. But I do have it, have it downtown. Any other, just weigh in where you want it. I, I just felt like from conversations before, the conversations at the public hearings, that we needed some avenue to begin to address things that, that the commission wanted to talk about. All right, hearing no discussion. From the audience, any additional discussion on the memo? Yes, come up. Dessel, just introduce yourself, please, for the record.
That's all I intend to do, is introduce myself. My name is Dessel Peterson, and I was a member of the committee. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about what the committee was thinking.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the audience, from the commission? You want that motion read back? Before, no? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Now, as I said before, you can discuss them in any order, and I believe Mike has the suggestion he would like to get out of the way.
Mister Chair, I'd like to address item number six, and I would like to make a motion to introduce a moratorium for the proposed draft ordinance amendment twenty-three oh one for the period of one year, beginning at such time that this is approved by the county commissioners.
Is there a second to that? I'm going to just second it for discussion purposes only, I'll second. So, the floor is open for discussion.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
What's the purpose of the moratorium?
What's the purpose of the moratorium? Several things, I would think, go ahead, Mike.
Well, one of the biggest things, this would buy some time for the, the public itself to get things figured out, to give them time to figure what they want to do. I mean, we're hitting them all at once with this, say, okay, here we go. This would give them time to look at this thing. To me, it just buys them a little extra time. What, what's your thought on it?
I also, can I weigh in? I wrote down three things that I think it does. One, it would allow those properties with covenants, or those desiring to have covenants, on this matter ample time to have a legal wording established regarding their position on short-term rentals. Number two, the Pennington County Planning Department, Planning Commission, and the Board of Commissioners will have additional time to clarify and review ordinance regarding short-term rental property in Pennington County. In other words, this process would continue on. It should be noted that our ordinance is currently in place which are capable allowing for review of existing properties during the moratorium. Those ordinance reviews currently in process will continue and evolve and be completed. It would all allow for an additional action period for those property owners not currently operating within the county ordinance to attempt to come into compliance. I believe I just spoke to Brittany, we have like a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five ordinance compliers. We have over a thousand vacation home rentals or short-term rentals within Pennington County. Excuse me? Include city limits, yes, excuse me. And then, the resolution should indicate more aggressive enforcement, because that's in here, and larger penalties potential in the future regulations. So, that's the only three things that I would add to. Go ahead, Megan.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So, are you guys discussing a moratorium on anybody applying for conditional use permits? Are you discussing the moratorium that is already written into the ordinance that gives people, what is it, six months to come into compliance so they don't have to pay the penalty fees?
That's a good point.
I just want to make sure that I understand.
Actually, we're not even recommending, we put the one year, and we're recommending the Board of Commissioners look at a moratorium to allow people time to, you know, we, we, we deal with especially the covenant issue. We see swords up here all the time about covenants, and some of it's just wording, where they're not even in a position based on current, what do you call it, judgments?
Yeah, and I mean, unfortunately, covenants, we really, the county really has no business getting involved in.
No, but we could give them time to get theirs straightened out, and if they don't, that's their choice.
I mean, that's assuming that everybody in that neighborhood is going to agree to it, because houses are only, I mean, that's the thing, houses are only subject to a covenant if the people that own those houses agree to the covenants.
I don't, excuse me.
Yeah, if those, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. If those covenants aren't in place, you know, usually covenants are put in place by developers at the very beginning, you know, when they own all of the land at once. So, when you've got a neighborhood later on, you really have to have the whole neighborhood on board with those covenants, or otherwise, it's not going to happen. I mean, it will happen for some of the properties, the people that consent to them, but it's not necessarily going to happen for, you know, if there's somebody that wants a vacation home rental, and they don't agree to those covenants, those covenants aren't going to be, you know, really on those properties, because you could only put covenants on a property by somebody that owns that property. So, I just, I just want to make sure that I have it clear, because I, I guess I kind of got a jumbled understanding. Do you guys want to put a moratorium? Because typically, a moratorium is for, we are not allowing people to apply for these things for a set amount of time. The last moratorium that we did, that's, that's what it was, was you can't apply for, you know, from this date to this date for anything. The moratorium that's currently written into the ordinance is only, and it's specifically written for the fees. So, if you guys would want to talk about, you know, the moratorium on fees, I totally understand that. But if you're discussing doing an entire moratorium on taking in any applications for VHRs, I think that needs to be more clear in the motion, because right now, I don't know what your motion is for and what the moratorium is for, so it suggests clarifying that a little bit more.
And that was what I was gonna try to clarify before you stood up there.
Sorry.
Only because, I was gonna say, moratoriums typically stop everything from moving forward. And we've seen that anytime we install, every time the county has installed a, a moratorium, it's always stopped everything from moving forward. So, we got to be careful on what we do unless you.
Could I weigh in on here, though? I wanted, because you actually addressed two or three little things. One of them is, because I've had discussions on this, and I won't hide that. When you're talking about the covenants, all we're talking about is recommending to the commissioners in our, what he's, our motion here, that they look at giving the people ample time. And what I'm talking about is there's a lot of people with covenants out there felt they had the wording in their covenants that covered them from commercial activity. The difference between commercial activities and vacation home rentals is been by what the court said it's going to be. And the court also indicated that they were going to have to be very specific about what they named. This gives them ample time to name that, and we have taken that sort of way. If they don't get it done, if they don't look at doing it, and they don't get their membership to approve them, then the moratorium goes off, we go our way, and, and we will continue to work on cleaning up for the new short-term rental, it may be bed breakfasts too, it may not just be vacation home rentals, cleaning up what we need for short-term rentals, so that we don't have people rattling swords on both sides, and specifically different age groups, and we see that.
I just want to clarify, so your intention would be to not allow people to come in for new conditional use permits for VHRs, so a total moratorium? Okay.
Yep, I think that's what Mike indicated to me he was proposing, and I seconded it, so we could get to this.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that's what the motion was for. Because that's a pretty drastic measure, we don't do that very often. That would mean that no one would be able to come in and make an application for a year if the board decided to adopt that.
But we still have ordinances in place to review the ones that exist.
No, I mean, it would just be for the ones, it would not allow any new.
Correct.
New CUP.
But for the ones that exist, we still have the right to review and follow ordinances.
Correct, yep.
Thank you. That's, that's what I wanted to make clear, so people didn't think everything went out the window.
Yeah, so our existing ones would continue existing, but we would not be able to look at any new ones if the board chose to adopt a moratorium like that.
Sitting on this board, being, and I'd have to say, there should have been, so many times, people with covenants have come forward that had it in place and thought that they had the wording that was proper and would meet the regulations, so that they could pursue their own defense. They can't under some of them, and that was taken away.
Well, and, you know, the, the top.
That's tough to deal with when we sit here and we see ninety percent of, of a particular area disagree with our standing behind people's property rights.
But ultimately, what the people within that area want only matters if it is relevant to the conditions in which we have in our ordinance. If those reasons are not valid or supported by fact, then it doesn't matter if ninety percent of the people don't want it. If it's allowed in that area and they meet all the criteria, then it should be approved. And frankly, covenants shouldn't even be considered by you guys.
But they should be considered by people that are buying it, and that when you see ninety and a hundred percent of the people, it gives them somewhere to go to discuss that matter before the property's sold, before it's purchased, before it's decided on what the property right use is going to be.
I have a question.
Karen, for me, or for someone else?
No, for Charlie. How do you, how do you intend to let, let all these homeowners associations know they need to rewrite their covenants? I mean, delaying this for a year.
I think we could get in the front page of the paper in this in two days. And we will be. I mean, it's that simple. I think we've got to, I personally agree with Mike. I think we have to start taking and putting the swords back down in the, the, away, and quit rattling the swords every time. And there are folks that have legitimate concerns that they thought they had this covered in non-commercial activities, a wording of how they had it in their covenants, and it's not covered anymore because of courts. And I, I pointed out to Mike when I was talking, I agree with the courts on how they decided. I'm sure there's lots of people have some question about how the courts decided what is the right on vacation rental or not versus the property use, because. And the last thing is, remember when we say "commercial"? For instance, if you come in here and you have it, I have, we have covenants that says "commercial", use the word "commercial", but they use it other words too. But these folks that are doing vacation rentals deal with the state in, I think, three commercial areas where they actually pay it for a permit and activities. And yet, we still don't call that "commercial" and it's because of the property use. Go ahead, Kevin.
I can't support a moratorium. The committee has been, what, a year or two that has written this draft ordinance. I think it's time that we start talking about some of these issues and making some amendments to it that we need to talk about and do. But as far as a total moratorium, I think that's crazy. I think there's a lot of people that are working on doing home, vacation home rental stuff, and if we put them off for another year, it just takes another year out of their ability to do anything, so I can't support that.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I have to agree with Kevin. And this thing with getting some kind of covenants is, is always a straw man, because immediately, somebody says, okay, we're gonna redo the covenants. Now, we need to hire a lawyer, and we need to spend money to enforce this and make it viable. And almost immediately, the interest fades. I, I, I think very little would be done. And in the meantime, you have people who want to exercise, it seems to me, their commercial option, which is to make properties for all practical purposes more diverse in terms of how they can generate income and how they can be used. And I think putting it off for another year is sort of like saying, gee, many Christmas, we're really afraid to change the regulations. And it seems to me, this is a, is not a very burdensome change. I, I don't see large, difficult issues that the committee has created for owners to have to assume. It'd be different if we were going into something in which you were radically changing the template that we have here, which is how a vacation home rental should be operated and so forth. And so, I, I have to agree with Kevin. I, I would hate to see us go to a moratorium like this. I think that's, I think we've got some issues to discuss here, some fine tuning for sure, but I would be very disappointed if we resorted to that.
Dame, anybody else want to comment before we get to a vote?
I will echo those, those statements as well. I, I can't support a moratorium. There's a lot of things around this, but talking about this particular motion, I, I wouldn't support them. I think there could be some significant changes from my personal view in the ordinance. But I think we need to make some decisions and, and make those revisions within the ordinance and allow people to still be able to utilize their property. I agree with covenants and people that want those covenant rights. But I also feel that it's hard for those neighbors to all come together and actually get those written or rewritten. But if it's something they're passionate about and that they really believe in, it's, it's their obligation to go do that. And I don't think we should penalize everybody else within the county just for these neighborhoods that need the time to go alter their covenances or establish them.
Mister Chair, I'm going to echo all those comments as well, and I'm also going to put this out there. This hasn't been a, you know, just a two-year issue. Back when I was on the Planning Commission, we dealt with this, and we dealt with letting people know it's, you know, we don't look at the covenants. We've explained it many times, and some of those areas where those covenants are, they never took maybe our recommendation to, if you don't want them in your area, change your covenants. Either they couldn't change the covenants because they couldn't get the majority of the individuals to do it, or they didn't take action. I know there's many of individuals that I've dealt with over the last six years that, you know, whenever there's things that they could have taken action on, they didn't do it. And so, I don't think a moratorium is going to make them take action. I think they need to be responsible citizens and move forward with taking action now within their covenant communities if they want to prevent VHRs in those communities.
Thank you, viewers. Wow, the Chair sure appreciates the comments from all. You and I have lived in a number of covenanted areas, Jim, and I think you too, Karen. So, the comments are on the table, I think it's time to look at, go ahead.
I was just gonna make one other comment. Everybody that's been sitting up here, Jim and I have been, we've served almost, were you on at the same time when I first came on too? So, you knew what I'm talking about, Jim.
Well, that's what I was gonna throw in on your comments too, way back even when I was on. You're correct, we, we did say that we do not honor review of the covenants. We do, I think in the old days, they considered them if it was a substantial percentage by petition, and that has changed. So, I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate your comments. Any other discussion from the commission on, from the audience? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Tom Palm. I've appeared before the commission and the county commissioners on a particular issue for a VHR that we were hoping to get a license for and are limited by the one acre rule. I think you're familiar with my arguments in that. This moratorium is, that's a whole new issue, and I, I agree, very, very drastic step. I think you're attempting to address an issue which is really out of the purview of the, the commissioners in terms of dealing with HOAs or other types of rulings within neighborhoods. I, I think that's a neighborhood issue. And you've already made it clear that you're not going to deal with that, so now I don't know why you would put a moratorium in to specifically deal with that one particular issue. I think putting a moratorium, as I. I think putting moratorium, as I understand it, would be shutting the door on a whole number of people who are thinking, okay, we will now try and uh do this legally. And now you're totally shutting the door on that. So anybody who you, you had hoped to bring under the fold of your regulations is going to go, screw that. Why, why would we even try? So I, I think that'd be a huge mistake. As far as what I thought was being discussed today in terms of the draft proposal, again, I, I was hoping to just address one of the items that you noted, which was the one acre rule. And uh depending on how you rule here or not, I guess I was hoping that at least that one acre rule would, you would give some avenue to planning and zoning to allow a way for that to be.
Time we're going to get to the other items right after, if we get this one off the table.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then I'll stop here.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the table?
Mr. Chair, um, I didn't realize I would kick up a hornet's nest, but I understand what everybody's saying and, and that is fine. Uh, having looked at Hill City's uh moratorium and Custer and all that, I, to me, it seemed like this would be a reasonable thing. We'd continue working the rest of the year, get everything ready and be off to the races a year from now. It's not going to happen that way. I can see that. So I appreciate everybody saying what they said and some of you brought us some things I hadn't thought about. So anyhow, that, that's fine and, and I appreciate that.
Well, and as I commented to you, so you know, I, I don't consider any of the ordinances a horse race or something. We've got to do quickly. We've got to look at them at long term. That's the way they are. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. Now, uh, as far as the commission, uh, do you want to go down the list or do you want to go, you have any that you'd like to deal without order? There's one easy one to, to do right off the bat and that's local contact. It was omitted. And Kelsey, who isn't here, we should compliment her, caught that. And I don't think any of us caught it. The, nothing in regards to the local was put in there and uh Kelsey does have a recommendation. And we do need to add wording in regards to the local contact. And I'll redo what I brought Kelsey's notice to me. I suppose you don't have a copy of it, right? Oh, I'll get it. Right here, I'm getting warmer. Kelsey Rausch, right there. Here we go. Is it all right? Shall we just get this one out of the way? I was just reading through the draft ordinance and noticed that there are not requirements of a local contact changes. The property owner has to notify us and the neighbors. That is in our current ordinance and I think it is very important. So someone would like to make a motion if, if it is omitted?
I think you looked and I didn't find it.
Under section.
Fifteen F's.
And it's not under, it's not there, it's under uh D six.
I thought it was. Kelsey is correct.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
There is a section about uh local contact, but it doesn't say that if your local contact changes.
All right.
Yeah, it addresses it in section F. I'm not sure what all the other paragraphs are that's.
Well, it says may retain. What was her recommendation?
Her, her recommendation is that we had hard wording before that when they made, they did the changes, that they had some notification requirements, they had things they had to do. And that's true.
Right.
Basically.
The first thing they had to notify was the planning department if they made them a cha- a change on a local contact. So.
If you have a local contact and that local contact changes, that has to be broadcast.
We could leave the door open on the motion that I could see a motion that would require us to review the wording on local changes such that, that it does require notification at least to the planning department and the neighbors and whatnot of a change. We could do that. And then they could review feel whether it's comfortably in there already. Do you want to do that?
I, I would make a motion that staff um looks at the current ordinance and adds language regarding the local contact, change of local contact for further review by the committee.
Is there a second to that?
I second that, yep.
Moving second and, and we'll use, I'll just give you a copy of Kelsey's. Any discussion from the audience? Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Dessel Peterson, member of the committee. We never actually talked about uh the local contact very much that I recall. And um, and I agree that there should be notice of the change, but I also think there should be a requirement like the exists in the current ordinance, that if they, if the owner lives more than fifty miles away, there has to be a local contact. Rather than it just be a may appoint, I think there should be the current ordinance requirement.
Similar wording to the existing ordinance.
Correct. That requires a local contact.
Thank you, Dessel. Questions?
Mr. Chair, uh, I, I would agree. I, I, I think we need to mandate that. I mean, uh, it could be the owner, of course, or it can be somebody who's employed by them. But it seems to me there ought to be somebody who's within kind of arms' reach of and can be there, you know, within a reasonable period of time. I, it kind of escaped me that we had not, that the committee had not stipulated that. So that would be my require, uh, concern.
I think it was just an error of omission. We, we slid through it. And I will note just for the record that we are getting more and more reviews that involve cameras too uh in regards to the applicant owners. So uh you know, we've got one, I don't think there will be any problem. Do you, any further discussion? Rita, go ahead. I thought this would be an easy one.
It is an easy one. Um, I'm also looking at D five where it says local contact, uh, where it says they must live within fifty, if an owner chooses to have a local contact, the contact must, so you actually have it in two sections. And um, I think um the A was live within fifty miles of the VHR. It's great. B was be reachable twenty-four seven, which I thought was within reason, be reachable within twenty-four seven. And then, then uh you could put the notified changes there also. But um, there's, you have, you have it in two sections in a way.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with the wording in the motion. Is the commission comfortable with the wording in the motion?
Can you restate it for me?
Look, hold on just a minute. Okay. So moved by Burton and seconded by Lassiter to review the current section, section three nineteen for the local contact language. And if the local contact changes, incorporate that language for the local contact and updates for the local contact into the new proposed draft ordinance.
I have only question I had, and it did refer to changes. That's what Kelsey was most concerned about was changes. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four is history. Now, whatever the planning commission would like to do from there, the item number one is the one acre requirement.
I would address that, Mr. Chair. I've been in short-term rentals from Vegas to Phoenix to Florida. And most all of them that I've stayed in um are residential homes and lots that are a quarter of an acre or less. And um if we have some uh issues with some of these that have a requirement of because of septic tank, I know that's talked about before. Um, but I would um, would recommend that we either remove that to nothing or take it down to something that's much smaller than that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I, this is one of the, the things that we've heard a lot of comment about, uh, the one acre lot. I have concerns about that as well. I, I would like to see it reduced. I, I think we could do a motion, uh, or the change I would like to see is that as long as the property matches the septic to the amount of bedroom use and that you have two occupants per bedroom and that that would meet the septic rule, that that would be an acceptable use of the property. Um, you can't have more people than the septic will allow and that's dictated by the amount of bedrooms that are in the property. That's already a code thing and banner rule. So if the property complied with that, um, I don't think lot size would really matter as much. There's, there's a lot more um involved in the other topics that also go along with that. But that's my, kind of my feeling on the one acre rule.
Anyone else care the way in?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Just a quick, uh, Brittany, can you just give a quick background on why we chose one acre? Is it more for the onsite wastewater treatment and things of that nature? Or was it just because we didn't want to pack something in? I just want to make sure that we all have that knowledge.
Sure, I can go back to a little bit of the history of it. Originally, a vacation home rentals weren't allowed in suburban residential at all um in that zoning district. And uh when it got, when the ordinance was revised again in two thousand and fourteen, I believe that it was a concession that it would be allowed in suburban residential if the lot sizes were one acre. And the one acre comes from the fact that you can have a well in a septic on a one acre lot size. I mean, it meets the minimum requirements um for that. Um, so that's basically where it came, came from. As far as why it stayed and Dessel or Ms. Peterson can um speak to it too, is um there was some concern about, you know, giving some kind of buffer and distance between homeowners, you know? So if you had a one acre that would allow ample parking, it would allow somewhat of a buffer between the vacation home rental and and current, uh, you know, like long-term residence. So that's kind of the history and correct me if I'm.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me making another comment on this one, uh, you know, I haven't stayed in a VHR in Pennington County, but I've stayed in a VH that I can remember. But I have stayed in VHRs in other places and I'm not sure of any of them that were at least a, an acre. Most of them were smaller than an acre. I know outside of this state, um, many of the ones I've stayed at were smaller than an acre. So.
Well, you know, I have a terrible habit of throwing fuel on fire for us. I'm going to throw way in here with another thought if you might consider it. I wrote down, we should include revised wording such for the purposes of special use permits, the one acre lot requirement is maintained. And all requests with less than one acre lot be required to file the conditional use permit guidelines. In other words, this ordinance splits those now into the special use permit. You know, we have two styles of approach to this and conditional use I'm suggesting. And I'm basing mine on, I think the gentleman had point three three in Rapid Valley that was at the, uh, one of the hearings. And he really did a rather compelling story about why he has a vacation home rental, which is next, I believe it's very near his place and next to it. And his neighbors were in a agreement with that. He used to long-term rental it and uh he had bought it as an investment thing. I think you'll all remember and he lost forty or fifty thousand dollars on somebody came in and dumped it because of the same legal requirements for getting them out. And that was very compelling to me that, that that was smaller than one acre. On the other hand, I'm not sure that we can wholesale wise just turn it in to the less than one acre. So at least those people that do have a legitimate would be heard by this uh, the, the planning commission under a conditional use permit process to look at one acre or less. Otherwise, if you go through the administrative, the special use permit, it stays one acre. So that was my recommendation. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, um, you know, I would, would agree with Travis. I, I don't think I've ever stayed in a VHR that was an acre or anywhere near it. But I don't think I've ever stayed in a VHR in uh an area like uh western South Dakota. It's always been an urban environment. So naturally, uh, and we do have urban options here. Rapid City has plenty of vacation home rentals within the community. So if you want an urban experience, so I was kind of thought that the one acre would allow some separation. It would also promote the idea that, you know, people who want to have a place in the county might be more interested in something that is truly more rural, a little more rustic and so forth. But I, I'm not so certain that's true. I have an ex-student who has a small piece of property up in the hills and it's less, just, it's like point nine oh acres. And he can't do anything with it and it's a cabin and he would love to be able to. And so I, I, I realize those situations. So I'm some, sometimes wondering maybe your option, Charlie, would be a sensible one to, you know, uh, go through a process where it seems to me we have to think a little bit. I kind of worry about the valley out there. There's some of those neighborhoods that a developer could come in here and buy ten houses in short order and turn them into uh really vacation home rental land. And I don't think that would set very well. And so I, I wouldn't want to see that kind of uh dramatic radical change. So I, that, that's my feelings on this one acre thing. I am conflicted somewhat, but I think we can, there, there's a way to find out some kind of an answer.
Will we ask the public, any, are the commissioners like?
I like your idea. The special permitted use would, the ones that the um planning and zoning department would have administrative control over, I like the one acre because they have more room, they have more access. And then bring the other ones to the, to the board, to the planning commission. I think that's a reasonable alternative.
Just so the commissioners are aware, and I know you are, the special use permit, every box has to be checked. In other words, for that to go into, to get a special use permit, where conditional use permit is decided by this body. Go ahead. Go ahead. And anyone else? Go ahead, Kevin.
So to piggyback on my earlier statement, uh, the reduction of the one acre minimum, I think, would aid in compliance. So as you stated earlier, a hundred and twenty or so and a, a thousand that are listed. So uh some of those are in the city, but some of those are also out in the county. And they may not be able to comply if they are less than an acre. I would like to see a lot more VHRs come into compliance. I think this is a way that we can address that compliance issue. The, the things I would really like to see is restrictions on density. Now, I know that within the, the ordinance, it states a five percent density limit, but that's countywide. I mean, it doesn't take into.
Can I hold you off on density? Because we've actually got somebody in the audience too that wants to talk on this one.
But they, they inter, they interconnect, right?
Okay, I understand where you're coming.
If you take the one acre lot and you reduce them down, now all of a sudden you talk of what Jim was saying, somebody comes in and buys up a, a residential or a, urban subdivision and puts them all into rentals. That's something we can control via a density um issue or ordinance. That's worded differently.
That's true. That, the, the recommendation I had of separating them would control that, yes. If you're talking about that, it would help the density. You could, then this board would, or this commission would be reviewing before those were issued.
Yeah. And then the, the final piece that I wanted to talk about is I, I like the idea of the public always being able to bring their concerns to us. So I like the idea of a, of special permitted use as long as we can put it in there so that they're meeting all of these certain requirements. The one acre rule um may not be one of those requirements from my standpoint. If they met the septic and the bedroom requirement, that could go through. But how does that affect the density? So they would have to prove that they are not overdressing a neighborhood in order to get that special permitted use through. If there was a question about that, it would come forth as a CUP.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mike.
Chair, it would appear to me that the one acre lot size requirement is simplicity. I, I mean, it's one acre. There's no, you know, grace built into it. It's one acre. You start going down and then you start running into the, you're close to this, you're close to that, you've got septic tanks, you've got the different things. We can address that in a continued use permit. I, I like the, the one acre for the special use permit. And then uh the other, the smaller ones than in the conditional use permit from my standpoint.
Anyone else? Travis?
I would just say I think that puts a, a burden on um this group to have to listen to everyone that comes in here and says, I've got a point nine nine acre or I have a point five acre when we're probably going to approve it anyway. So I still object to it.
Mr. Chair, I, I think good bureaucrats want to get this down to a formula. We're not bureaucrats here, but, but uh good bureaucrats have a point. If you've got precise, well-thought-out rules, then things move much more quickly. And instead of having, you know, meetings in. Instead of having, you know, meetings, endless meetings in which there's much argumentation and discontent. But, so I understand, I think you're absolutely right, that we would be subject to more of this kind of thing. But I also think there's a point for us where we have to do some of that, in knowing who the issues, people come to you and all of a sudden you realize that they're concerned about something that you didn't think was that important. So, and we get that kind of feedback from folks who come to these public hearings. So maybe there's something to be said for it. I, I would not reject it. But I like the idea of well-crafted, efficient pieces of legislation that require little, you know, discussion and argument. And I don't know if we can reach that, but anyway.
Okay, and then I'll just throw my last comment. And the reason I wrote it that way was because we had a number in the public hearings that spoke each way. And I felt that we don't want to, in the special use permit where it's a box check-type category, I did not feel comfortable just opening the door to that size of change at this point in time. The Board of Commissioners at the time, they installed that. The Planning Commission did not put the one acre requirement originally. It was more what Kevin said, it was left open at that time. And I just felt that the Board of Commissioners felt it that way. I just didn't want to run into that fence or break down that door. Any other? Joyce? And then we've still got Tom yet too. We're going to have you back up here. I know you want to speak on this one, Tom. Go ahead, Joyce.
Joyce Shagru, citizen. It's, I appreciate your discussion on this issue. I was on the previous two ordinance committees, the original one and then the revision one, when the one acre rule was put in place. So from, and now I live very close to one, okay? In a high-density area, Silver City. What I, and I've watched what you do, I haven't attended many meetings, but I have read every agenda and the backups on VHRs for the last probably five years. So I've watched. And the one acre rule, to my recollection, now I didn't go back and research this, a variance was asked in a couple, a couple of times. The first was a trial in Idlevice. And, and trying to compromise it out, the commission did a variance and allowed, it was .9 something, with the caveat that they were given a year to purchase adjoining land, which was available, to make up the one acre. And it went exactly as I thought it would. At the end of one year, the adjoining owner had declined to sell. And so one was approved, they didn't rescind it, they approved it at .9 something. Now, that's the only one that I'm aware of. Brittany probably knows, there may be more that came up, but only one was approved. What happened when the one acre rule was proposed, and Brittany did it, the day that the commission voted on it that many years ago, the temperature, about all of the controversy, and this had been nasty, really, really nasty. And the temperature went down. There was a group that did not like the one acre rule because they had smaller lots. Some were operating illegally and probably still are, that smaller lots. They knew they would not be able to come in and, or have new ones, less than one acre. Those that had the acreage, it was no problem. And Idlevice is one good example of that. So it was based pretty much on the septic and well requirement. And your point is well-taken, that DNR, or whatever they're now called, you know, puts those two together and says how many people you can have in a house. But the temperature went down, it was a rule. And I worked in bureaucracies for many, many years, and Jim is right, that you can, if you have clear, clear rules, you can make easy decisions. But, and I, and I don't disagree with what you're discussing. It sounds like a good idea, a new way to look at it. But those that come in for less than an acre, for a CUP, help these folks out so they know how they are to make their decisions. Otherwise, you're going to hear us over and over and over again. And what I've watched happen is you lose consistency. Those of us who've worked inside the system, if you say one acre, that's easy, you've got one acre. If you say .9, maybe? Well, then when? At .9? So Jim's point should really be considered. If you do adopt so that the special use permit, it's a given, if it's one acre, if it's less than an acre, you come in for a CUP, we're back to where we were before, without anything concrete for the planning department and you all to make your decisions on. So then we're back into, I don't like my neighbor and all of that. So be careful. The discussion is really good. The discussion is good. And I'm not saying that you should not change it, but be careful. Think through it really carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce. I've got Tom I've got to bring up, and then we'll bring you up. Tom, and certainly, this, just having the speaker request, you can speak on any of the items. Go ahead, Tom, but not, not while we got the motion for work right there.
Okay, Tom Palm, again. First of all, I appreciate all the time you have taken reviewing these issues. Clearly, there's a lot of thoughts on every one of those items in the agenda. Everyone's got their own point of view, and you're kind of stuck with trying to incorporate all of that and put it together in a way that at least makes some of the people happy some of the time, I guess. So speaking, I, I guess I'll go back to the one acre. I appreciate Mrs. Shagru's observations. I guess my observations are, as far as the one acre, it seems to go back, based on Brittany's statement, that it was based originally on the requirements for septic and water. So since you already have that requirement in place, I guess I wonder how many vacation home rentals are going to actually have less than an acre, but still meet the requirements of the septic and water, which would presumably be a grandfathered issue. So anything new coming up would have to meet that one acre. So they already have to cross that hurdle. So we're now kind of making the vacation home rentals who have less than an acre into a, I would guess, a pretty small group of people within Pennington County. And I guess I don't have any data one way or another to back that up, that's just a guess on my part. I think the one acre, if it's tied to that, then should be separated from density and all the other issues people have brought up, because those are, again, their own separate issues. You can have two pieces of, two homeowners on two one acre lots and still be 50 feet apart. So I don't know that that really applies to density. But same thing for parking, so all these other issues, the, the one acre's not a magic bullet to solve those issues. As far as the, the idea of separating this into SUPs and CUPs, I guess if you're going to be Solomon and split the baby, that is my, that would be the second best way to handle this. At least then you are providing an avenue for someone like me to come before the board and say, "We have a situation which I think meets all of the other requirements and the intentions," and present our argument, and hopefully come up with an answer that would be agreeable to us in this case, but also meet those, those requirements and intentions. Right now, there is no avenue for that. So I, I think, and this was really coming from Rita, if, if you want to go that direction, then item under D, add a fourth item after four, that basically says, if you have less than one acre, you can apply using the COP method, or CUP method. And I guess for me, that would be not as good, but certainly opens that avenue. Any questions on that?
Questions for Tom? Just so you know, the, the example I used, that gentleman was on public utilities. That also, we don't really address in our one acre. He had public utilities, both water and sewer.
Okay.
Just wanted to throw that out so that the commission understood that too. I apologize, I should have included that in why I originally wrote that. Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Yes, ma'am. Please introduce yourself just for the record and take off from there.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Riley. If the one acre rule is meant to address too many vacation rentals really close to each other, I don't think that's going to solve your reasoning. He sort of touched on that. If these are triangular pieces of property, those front doors are still going to be 96 feet away from each other, and you could have 10 acres behind you, and that's not going to fix it. But I think it's going to negatively impact a lot of people who have smaller ones, who are running them really well and taking care of them and don't have issues with their neighbors and things like that. And there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about 80% not being licensed. I do agree that if you have very concrete, easy-to-understand regulations, that's a good thing. It's easy for you to enforce, it's easy for people to comply. I don't think the one acre rule is what that needs to be, that number, because there's 80% out there who aren't complying. We are complying, we are licensed with the state, but healthy society has rules that are easy to comply with and are enforced, right? So even if all of this has changed, who's addressing the 80% who aren't enforced? And I, I do sort of wonder if the hope isn't to get things a little bit more concrete so you can start enforcing them, and actually just shut a bunch of them down. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any ill intent. I think the intention would be to make it so people can be in compliance, right? Because then that's easier for the police to enforce, for everybody else. If everybody's licensed, you know who the contact people are, all of those things. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commission? Want a motion? We want to leave it where it's at? Whatever you'd like. This was one of the most talked about, I believe. I kept kind of a little score. Of all the public hearing items, this was, had to be number one on the hit parade list.
I have a question for Kevin. Do you have a thought on a lot size? Does it make any difference?
I don't think so. You know, we've had a lot of talk about Rapid Valley, and there's a number of vacation homes out there on a .2 lot that are functioning fine. You know, I use an example of, let's say we've got a military family that gets transferred out but wants to stay in Rapid City, wants to, you know, run a vacation home rental or doing something there. Now we've got to go through that process again of saying, "Okay, I have a .2, I've been doing it fine for a number of years, haven't been in compliance because we didn't have a rule for it." So I don't really have a lot size. I think that each structure will determine itself. You know, if it's, if it's on a small lot, it probably is only going to be able to handle one or two people in there anyway, because it's a small place. So I don't see any real advantage. I think just a lot of extra oversight and, and review process of having to go through anything under. I mean, everyone, let's say that we just have a 99% that's going to come in and get approved, probably most likely the one that's a .2 acre lot, same thing. You know, how are we going to argue that, that you're not as good as the person that has a .25, if that's the figure? So I, I just, I don't see any advantage to, to putting a minimum, other than, again, the state requirements on if you've got a septic system and water well, something like that, that requires X amount of size. I would have no problem with not having any size in there.
Karen, follow it?
You know, one of the problems is the one acre thing is something that you can't do much about. I mean, you can't just say, "Well, I'm going to go over and buy some land next door," because as Joyce pointed out, oftentimes it's not available, or the neighbor jacks the price up to an inconceivable amount. So it, it's one of the few things that you can't do much about. So that's why somebody who wants to get involved then is forced to de, they can do all this other stuff, you know, but they can't do anything about the footprint. And so if we insist on an adjustable, you know, size, so to speak, then I think we run into some, some difficulty, and, and, and some people suffer. I, I don't doubt that. And so that's what I find a little frustrating, is it's the one thing that I find difficult to, to wrestle with. You know, you can't, you can't create something that's not there. And so this is a hard one to, to resolve, but we'll have to wrestle with it. And it is important, because it does relate, I think, to the density notion.
Not meaning to pick on the Board of Commissioners, but six out of the seven that sit on this in the conditional use permit process runs through this commission now. Their only reason to deal with any of this is reason. In other words, we're all just private cities, and we try to look at what's reasonable. And my thought in writing what I wrote was that it allows for non-cookie cutter, reason-type application, but we don't put back on the planning department that flexibility, let's say. We're saying they've still got to check the boxes, so they meet the legal requirements with the special use permit, but then this commission can decide whether the other. I do think that private utilities, you referred to it in what you're speaking about, some of those small lots are on private utilities. They may not be in a municipality, but we have private utilities out, not on municipalities. We have some that have septic, but water service to them, no, that sort of thing. So it allows for a non-cookie cutter, and, and that's what I think we need as a commission is some flexibility to look at those. Go ahead, Kevin.
Mr. Chair, I don't disagree with you. I, I also agree that if, if the applicant proved that their residents met DNAR standards, that that's also a cookie cutter process, and that it's something that the Planning Commission could easily check the box on, as long as they've brought evidence of that fact. So I'm not willing to vote on this one acre rule at this point, because it interconnects with so many of the other things within the ordinance. And to approve my suggestion of meeting a DNAR regulation, that, the only way I can really support that is if we look at enforcement, density, and other compliance issues that are within the ordinance. So I don't want to vote for one and not, not have the others understood prior. So my motion is to table any further discussion on these until our next meeting.
Does the one acre, or all of them?
We're at your time limit, sir. Oh, 12:45.
Oh, no, yeah. 12:45.
I, I would table the, the one acre rule then.
Table the one acre.
We have a hand up.
Is there a second to that?
Thank you.
Moving second into table of one acre, before you start discussion, that's not a bad idea. One of the things that came up, we'll just head up this way. One of the things that came up is, even on a one acre situation, what, you could be 50 feet apart, the structures could be, theoretically.
Yes, and one, one point that I just want to make about the one acre, if you're saying they have to meet LDA and R requirements, most of those lots that have, are very small that have septic on them, they don't meet the distances that are required to wells and other things. So when you look at that, if they're required to get variances, is that really meeting their requirements? So that's just something to think about when you're considering... So that's just something to think about when you're considering those smaller lot sizes. Most of those either have variances, or they're not meeting the septic to well distances that are required by D N A R.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Riley. Kevin, I just, your concerns about density, is that density within the rental itself, or is it density within the community?
It's density within the community.
Okay.
So, so we've heard a lot of comment from surrounding neighbors. I, I myself have stayed in numerous V H Rs from in-town to big rural properties outside of town. It's my preferred place to stay. But I really respect the, the people that have moved out to the country to live in a private environment and not be interrupted by bad rental situations. So the density rule that I would like to see is something more on a, on a, the one gentleman earlier was talking about being sandwich between two potential V H Rs. I think we need to address the density, otherwise we're going to have 90% of our 5% of the countywide in the Black Hills.
True.
And, and that takes away from the private enjoyment of those people that have moved out there to get out of the city and enjoy that serene environment. I think there's places for all of it, but that, that would be, if you set a density rule per so many square feet, or so many square acres, I think that's what we need to look at more so than as a countywide basis.
Well, I think that does make a lot of sense. I think when we looked at the one, the situation, the application that was happening this morning, I'm not sure what the lot sizes are that were out in that, that section, but where you have a, you know, a shared driveway, you could have two one-acre, you know, lots that are right on top of each other, you know, from a driveway and, and a living situation. I would say that just one of the comments I, I've heard, the licensing for the Department of Health, when they come in, they set based on, you know, whatever the water supply is and whatever the septic supply is, and the, and the number of egress windows that you have in the house. They set the number of, they set the number of guests that you can have at the, at the residence, right? So I, I've read through this, and I didn't, I don't know if there's anything in there that requires somebody to be licensed by the, the Department of Health, the South Dakota Department of Health. Because if there isn't anything in there, like there is for Rapid City, to be licensed by the Department of Health, then there should be something in there, and that would, that would apply a uniform standard to all the, all the vacation home rentals, both in incorporated Rapid City and in unincorporated Rapid City, to have a single set of standards for how many people you can own a chair house.
Bob, is it? Is it Bob?
Michael.
Michael? Go ahead. You want to answer that? The Department of Health?
Yes, that is a minimum requirement. Currently, right now, we require that, and we actually go out and do another inspection on top of what the Department of Health does. The committee wanted to basically, if the Department of Health is going out and doing those inspections, then the county would accept that and not do subsequent inspections on them, as long as they were meeting those requirements.
As they turn, plus they'd have to turn in their sheet.
Right. So they do, even now, for the reviews, they have to show their current lodging license with the Department of Health and their Department of Revenue.
This is in unincorporated county?
Yes.
Okay.
And to my understanding, Rapid City doesn't have a V H R ordinance.
No, but we're required by the state.
Right, but I don't think that the city itself, they're not allowed in the city, there's not a mechanism to be compliant in the city of Rapid City.
But not to be out of compliance either.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, the motion that's on the table is, or the motion is to table this until the next meeting, and I assume that you're going to slide, decide at which time you're going to take it off the table after review of some other items. Is that my assumption? Is that correct, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion from the audience? From the commission? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Unless you have something else, I'd like to talk about item number two, parking.
Number two? Go.
The only thing that stands out to me is, I have no problem with the minimum parking requirement that, you know, you have to have one parking spot is required per bedroom. Where, where it kind of got my attention was where it says maximum parking requirement, no more than two parking spots per bedroom is allowed. If a home is already built, and I live out of state, and I'm renting it when I'm gone, what if there's already a spot for eight parking spots? To, to say that you have a max, when it's a three-bedroom home, but I have eight parking spots, because that's how my, I got a three-car garage, I got a big pad or whatever, I just felt that that was kind of being a little too micromanaging. If, if you've got, if you've got those parking spots because it's part of your home, and you live out of the state half a year, and you, and you V H R at the other half, I, I think that's a little hard to manage that, or to even control that and say that that is doable to even just limit that, especially when someone might have five acres and they have a V H R on it. I mean, I'm looking at a piece of property that I could lease out two bedrooms, or I could V H R two bedrooms, but there's parking probably for 15 vehicles on the property, because it's a large piece of land. Are you going to say, well, you can't have it because you've got more than the, you know what I'm saying? I, I just think that that was, if I was to think about it, I would say that that doesn't need to be in there.
I'm always turned upon, and I'll try to stay out of it after this. I, I agree with the commissioner. I wrote, "The current Pennington County requirements for parking applied to V H Rs should be worded to be a minimum allowed. Should the applicant desire to allow their clients to have additional vehicles such as A T Vs, U T Vs, trailers for hauling motorized vehicles, et cetera, they will be required to have additional parking on their property per the existing county parking requirement specifications." That's what I wrote. So you guys can get around, pick it around from there, but we did hear, again, referring back, and all, all of us were there, so I'm preaching to the choir, we heard a lot about the excess parking, trailers, vehicles that pull those trailers, the A T Vs, the U T Vs, and other things that were on there. Thankfully, I think that today is the first time I've heard of an R V being hauled in. We didn't hear any of that during the, go ahead, Kevin.
I agree that there should be a minimum. It should also be worded as vehicles, not cars. And then there should be a clause for off-road vehicles or trailers, boats, motorhomes, that kind of stuff. Those would count, you know, as far as parking spaces. And then, I'm not sure what the current parking regulation says, but I think it really has to be stated that all parking will remain on your own property. And then I think there should be some violations if, if those are called out.
Kevin, I think Brittany can answer. I think it requires gravel, doesn't it? Or?
Yes, we have a specific section of our ordinance, 310, that just addresses parking, and there's specific requirements to the number of bedrooms, the type of parking spot. You know, it has to be like a nine-by-18, minimum gravel, dust-free surface.
Yeah, so part of my comment comes from when the rally happens, and somebody rents a place, they bring in three pickups with trailers, and they offload 12 motorcycles. Are, are those all counting as, you know, parking spaces? Is each motorcycle in a parking spot? Do they have to have the regulation for that? Is that in the ordinance? How is that being controlled? That's, that's where some of my questions come up, and somebody shows up with one pickup, big trailer, and six U T Vs, you know, is that count as two parking spaces? Does that count as, as eight parking spaces?
I use the word additional vehicles. If the client or applicant wants additional vehicle, they have to meet a certain spec to provide that parking right up front.
Vehicle or a trailer.
So that we know.
Yeah, or, or a trailer.
Or, and the neighbors know, in the application, but that's why I use additional vehicles. So, and I, of course, I just said et cetera on the rest of them. Anybody from the audience want to talk about parking? Okay? What would you like to do on this? We can, you know, in our review of these things, we can ask Brittany's department to go back and, and look at adding in our thoughts. You know, we don't have to write it. I, I, I don't want to get involved in the wording and prescribing the wording. I'd rather see them look at writing it.
Well, at, at a minimum, I would make a motion to, in section E, item number four under parking B, strike item B. That would be my motion, by what's right in front of me.
Or is it second to that for discussion? I'd second that. And that is what, would you direct us to where we need to look here?
That's on page four of your, of your document, and it's basically be as maximum parking requirement, no more than two parking spots per bedroom is allowed. That's that maximum that we were just talking about.
Okay. So that's got to be revised if we had any different dressing.
Gone. Now, that doesn't mean I'm not opposed to some of the other thought processes that were discussed about trailers and A T Vs, but I do think making it there, that's what my whole point was.
All right, does the commission feel comfortable getting that one out of the way?
I'm on the maximum.
Separate motion.
Yes.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I have a little concern about C. You know, there are places, and I can see, you know, that you want to keep it onto the property, but there are places where on-street parking is allowed. In a lot of, if it's in a rural, or in the city, there's, if it's a wide street, it's allowed to park there. So I'm not sure why we have to say all of them have to be off of the street.
County doesn't have anything that refers to on-street parking, does it?
There's only, the only areas that probably would have on-street parking is Rapid Valley.
Okay. Because the rest of them would be an organized municipality.
Either in a municipality or a road district.
Incorporated areas.
Or a road district.
Yeah. What Brittany's saying, just for the audience, is that she can only recall, and I didn't recall any of that, refer, I, I've never heard it referred to in the county, anything to do with on-street parking. It was always required to be within the limits of your property, but that was my history with it.
I don't, I don't take exception to the item C, because the limited access here, but if we, if we said off-street parking would be allowed, then somebody would be parking in a right-of-way, or in a drainage ditch, or those kind of things, like, because there's so much more property that doesn't really have designated off-street parking, I, I think it's good to leave that language within the, the ordinance.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, our parking ordinance requires it all to be on-site, but most of our off-street parking occurs in the valley. I mean, obviously, if you drive down those streets, those are.
They're all full of cars.
Yes. But most of the time, in other areas of the, the county, they're mostly on-site. But as far as our regulations, when we look at things, you have to provide it on your lot. You don't get to count towards your parking requirements off the lot. So if you build a structure, you have a business, all of your parking has to be on purpose.
All right, just as a point of order, I think we should address the motion that's on the table. Can you read that back for us, jury?
I missed the part where, because you guys got in discussion, the language that Travis wanted struck in in item number four.
Strike, yeah, it was strike underneath E, for parking, and then the letter B, which is maximum parking requirement, no more than two parking spots per bedroom is allowed, strike that.
Item. Strike that whole thing.
All right, that is the motion, and just a point of order. I think we should finish up on that, and then we'll get to the next one, which would be C. Is there any discussion from the audience on dropping item B, four B, from the final draft at this point in time? Are you wanting to speak on that, Joyce? Please introduce yourself for the record.
Joyce Chigoo, so this may be out of order, Charlie, but what I'm missing here is the rationale for why this was put in in the first place.
Agreed.
The C, why? I don't hear that.
Wait, wait, did you say C or B? We're talking about B.
The one about maxim, the maximum.
Okay, that is B.
Yeah. I haven't heard the rationale for why that was inserted, and there must have been some. So is the, are you not asking us the right question? Or do you not know? Do you already all know why that's in there? It's really unusual.
Joyce, they said in all three, and I can't remember why we put a maximum.
Okay, so that's my, it's a point of order.
Brittany does.
You're missing something.
I do remember the discussion from the committee. It came from the committee, and it had to do with the number of A T Vs and it, lots becoming overrun by trailers and, and R Vs and things like that. They wanted them to have designated spots, so it didn't become, you know, a destination place where there's 10 trucks that all had trailers with five A T Vs on it. That was the rationale, or some of the discussion.
Okay. I think we ought to go, I, I would, I would rather see dropping and be a little more specific about what we want for additional parking from the applicants, but that's my opinion. Are you ready to vote on this one? Okay. Hearing no discussion, the last discussion from the audience, from the commission? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. We have dropped that for the time being, as Travis pointed out, too. All right, now we're still on the item C we were talking about, off-street parking. We just will finish the discussion on that. Go ahead.
You know, and I can see, again, again, if all the county roads don't allow any on-street parking, that's fine, but I do know, again, that part of it that is under our jurisdiction is Rapid Valley, that some of them don't have garages, and, you know, if somebody does come out and happens to have a trailer, it's allowed to park that out in the street. So, you know, if we could word that somehow, that says where allowed, or wherever in a law, you know, whatever your wording would be, that, you know, if it is allowed, and they don't have a garage, but somebody wants to stay there and pulls up with a trailer, it can probably park on the street out there.
I remember I sitting in on the committee meeting, the last committee, someone else had the same experience I have. We have one up in our area, and actually, we have more than one, but one that I know it all the time, because I drive by it all the time, that semis, literally semis pull in, freight liners, K Ws, pull in with trailers, full of U T Vs and A T Vs. And I believe, if I remember right, at, at the committee meeting for this, there was one of the operators that had that, and they ran them off. They said, you're not going to park that vehicle here. If I remember right, they brought them up, and they felt it was a violation of their, I think they had no room to park. You're talking about a big parking space for a semi, let alone what they can haul, so. Mr.? Go ahead.
I was just going to ask a clarifying question. This is off-street parking. That means these vehicles have to park on that piece of property, is that right? I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. Even, I, I understand that in some places that there is the capability to park on the street, but in most businesses, you don't typically allow parking on the street. If, if you're going to have a business in Rapid City, if you're going to have a business in the county, you have to provide parking on your premises for that particular business to operate. So I don't see a problem preventing on-street parking, especially if we're going to allow it in these neighborhoods, because that's going to just add to the congestion of cars on the side of the road.
I was going to throw in that it came up, and I, I believe I can be corrected, that the county highway would have a serious problem with allowing that semi to park and not be on the property.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, stop and think about how many people have come before us and complained about people parking on their property, people parking in their driveway. You know, I, I think that's basically what C is saying, is that everything's got to be within that property, right or wrong.
Yep.
My feeling is that if those people are parking on somebody else's property, then that's another check against that property owner that's got the vacation home, you know. I agree, they, they should not be parking on anybody else's property, but if they're along a, a street that the property has limited parking for someone that brings a trailer, then I don't see why we should say, you cannot park here. Who are we going to have the police to?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What if we just ignored it? Seriously. I mean, if we provide a prescription, then we create a problem. And in most cases, I don't think this is a problem. I mean, I, I'm sure it is in some cases, but the reality is, I think a lot of times, it's a problem that we don't even hear about. You know, somebody comes in, a vacation home rental, a parker on the street. You know, somebody comes in, a vacation home rental, a parker on the street, and they're there two days and they're gone. And the neighbors may mumble about it, but it doesn't create, um, any kind of real difficulty. And I think that in most cases, the off-street parking will probably be provided. Um, particularly if we've got, you know, in more rural settings, you know. So I, I don't know if we can define it or if we need to define every contingency. That's.
What happened, and there was a lot of conversation on it, and that's why I wrote up, the way I wrote up, was that you have to, actually, the client comes forward and says they want these provisions for trailers and these other things. And then you gotta do them to respect, is because then you shouldn't be allowed to then, uh, encroach on other, encroach on other people's properties. Once you put that on there, this is what's designated, is that parking? And we don't refer to any of that in our current ordinance. And, um, the committee was pretty strong on that, that parking, if we're going to expand on it, that's why they felt like what we were saying was minimum. If you want more, then you, you better provide it when you're coming right through, the first time through with your application and everything else. So that was how I ended up thinking in that way. Go ahead.
And I agree with Jim that, that it's, it's not gonna be a problem most of the time. Rally week, maybe. The rest of the time, the people that are coming to vacation home rentals are typically not pulling a trailer. Some do because they're moving someplace, but typically they just have a small little car, they're out seeing the hills, and they don't have anything that's being parked on the street, except for typically rally week.
I hope Pure doesn't hit me with lightning, but the, the rally week law is one of the most difficult things for those that oppose vacation home rentals, as well as those that support it. The people that support it get bad, uh, vibe all the time from rally-style situations. Our planning department gets told that, that, uh, they're operating without a permit because the only time they operate is during the rally. And we would ha, actually have to go out there and prove that. So I, I agree with you to a point, but I do think we do need to address some of these things to help these folks that are neighbors, uh, when they're talking. A lot of these people show up at cars and then the, the truck and the trailer and all the vehicles other than the cars show up. So I, I, I'm, I'm for expanding that they've got to do some things here in the front end, but that's my opinion.
Could we tighten up item D, the designated parking? All guests and guests, visitors must park in a designated parking spot. How about all guests and guests? Visitor vehicles must be parked in a designated parking spot. Because they could park their cars in the designated spots and put their trailer out in the street.
My question on that is, that designated area, is that gonna show up your, your plan on there? So as Travis mentioned, um, on an AD parcel, if they aren't sitting in that one that shows up on the plan, are they in violation of Pennington County Code?
We typically just require them to show that they have ample space on their property to provide parking.
So it doesn't really mean that that's the spot, it's just that they have space.
Right. And typically it is. Uh, we have never had that complaint where they haven't been in their parking space.
But if you read that, it could be.
But do you go back out and see that it's gravelled and designated?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chair, touching on that, that makes sense if you have an on-road parking. So for example, you know, in some of these places, we have on-road parking. But if I parked right in front of the home, that's one thing. But if I park it on my trailer in front of my neighbor's home, that's a whole totally different other thing. If we're gonna allow on, on-road parking, I think that is key to say your designated parking is only within these confines, you know, along the sidewalk or whatever, rather than just saying you can have on, on-road parking and then your trailer can get in front of your neighbor's place. Cause they may have two teenagers that need that parking space too.
Are you saying Travis, that it would be in, only involved frontage then?
Yeah, real property frontage, but perhaps, if, if that is what we're thinking as far as on-road. But designated parking would probably come in more handy in that particular case rather than the typical cases where people already have a two or four parking spot garage.
My devil's advocate here.
Go ahead, Kevin.
If, if it's public parking along the street, it's not designated in front of your house. You can park in front of your neighbor's place anytime you want. It's, it's, it's public parking. It's not designated parking along the street. So I know because I've got neighbors that park all of their cars in front of my house. And, and there's nothing I can do about it, you know, except look at them. And, and so to try to control that within that, that boundary, I, I don't see that being i- in a, in a public street parking situation, anything we can control in the verbiage.
Fair enough. That's what, that's why I like on, on-property parking.
The chair understands that we've got a, there's no question that it looks like a change is in order, but we're not necessarily on the same page as how that change should be worded. And we don't wanna word it. I'd sure take a look at, uh, putting this one on the table as well. We do have a next copy that I know one person is here to speak on for sure. And that would be transfer. Is this something we could put as well and bring it up at the next meeting? And we could all scratch our head in the two weeks following and come up with a little better idea on what our thoughts are in parking?
It moves that we table the parking. What is it? Um, E4? Is that kinda the only place that we were looking at?
Okay, table. And that would be to the next.
Excuse me, that would just be, um, for, section four under E, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're on a discussion item, so we, we can just call it item number two. That's what I did with the other one.
That'd be fine. Yep.
We do a motion and a vote to strike B. So this would just be a table for item C?
Yes.
No, we did do one vote. We did do one vote, but we would be tabling, yeah, I see your point. Uh, okay, off-street parking. Let's call it off-street parking, not, not number two. Okay. That allows both that plus this.
I, I will second that.
All right. It's moved in second to table off-street parking until the next meeting. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Now, if we were to follow an order, the next one is transfer. And we do have someone here that would like to speak on transfer, I'm sure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would the commission like a five-minute recess?
We've got one that has to leave at 12:30 and, and was going to complimentary stay until 12:45 to be nice to us. And I would, I really would rather not recess right at this point. But you can certainly take a break yourself. We won't vote until you get back. Transfer. Uh, what I wrote, again, so I'll get out of the way. We should have some sort of provisions to allow an individual to transfer their VHR to direct family members after the completion of the appropriate documentation. We don't. We start all over again, the way I see it.
And I don't know how to word it either, but I, I think that, you know, those family members should maybe have first shot at being able to transfer it there. But I think that they still have to go through the whole process because that family member may not be as good as the transferee was.
They still have to fill out the direct documentation. But you're saying first chance, add a little bit more there. They have the first opportunity if the person that holds it transfers it to them.
Yeah. But they still have to go through, you know, everything as if it's just all brand new. So that that person, again, knows what it's like to run an operation.
I guess that broadened it from direct family members, you could also have a partner too, could you?
Yeah, you'd have to figure out who would be in that transfer. But, um, I think everyone that gets transferred needs to know the responsibility of running a VHR.
And all I'm, every time I put my, I'm just saying we ought to have words to those effect that they can do that. And there are people that don't feel comfortable. We do, I think, um, that we address transfer very well. Anybody else's comments on transfer? That was a big one that came up in the board of commissioners. Much more so than the planning commission. So they may not agree with us anyway, but we'll see. Anybody like to make a motion that would allow for that sort of wording, that would allow for some situation for transfer and let, uh, our legal and planning department look at that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I was gonna say, I'll second just for discussion. Cause I'm not necessarily opposed to being able to transfer as long as there's a process that makes, that ensures the new individual meets all the requirements. Uh, unless, and Brittany, I saw you look up at me, unless it's already stated that that is a condition. There's one that, that you're gonna know what I'm talking about, unless there's a, unless there's a condition written in when they receive that approval that they cannot transfer it. You know, you know what I'm thinking about?
Yeah, there's a few of them that were, that do have a condition.
There are some that have conditions that we wrote in the conditions that they could not be transferred. So I think, um, you know, this piece of the ordinance would not supersede those. So however it's worded, it needs to be worded that those wouldn't be automatically transferred or could be transferred.
Well, the language doesn't suggest that, does it? I mean, I'm looking at, where, where does it say you can't do this? I mean, does it say that you cannot transfer this?
It just basically says if a new owner, you have to do a new application.
Right.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it doesn't, if I say, I'm going to sell you the property, okay? And then you have to go apply for CUP. And I happen, you happen to be my son, okay? There's nothing that prohibits that. It just means that in order to make it, uh, a vacation home rental, they have to be successful in their application, right?
Right. Where it comes into play, there are some properties that are grandfathered in, that were grandfathered in under the original. Those wouldn't be, cause they'd have to meet the current requirements.
Which allowed them to make this transfer without ever applying for a new CUP. Is that what you're saying?
Essentially.
Okay.
That was the, the intent of the transfer is so they didn't ever lose that grandfathering, so that grandfathering would continue on.
All right. Well, that to me.
Protect grandfathering.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And I, and I would be in favor of forcing these people to go through the process.
Based upon the current.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was gonna say, I don't wanna protect, yeah, I don't, don't make it sound like that. I think, I think if it does transfer, they do have to bring it into full compliance at that point. Cause you said the reason why we didn't allow transferring is so that it has to be brought into compliance. And I would definitely, you know, would like wording in there that if, if it's been, I don't want it to be grandfathered in if we have the opportunity to bring it up when it gets transferred. I get what you're saying there, Jim.
I, I, yeah, I agree. I don't wanna see a transfer between private, private owner or private owner. But I would, I would strongly be, um, for allowing, um, immediate family members to be able to inherit that transfer. It's, it's a, it's kind of a family property right that's being handed down to other, other inherited people or gifted to people within your family to be able to have that. So I, I would think that immediate family would be an approved transfer, but everybody else would have to apply.
Well, can you inherit a liquor license?
No.
Don't believe so.
Same thing. It seems to me that they have to go through the hoops again.
But they'd still have to go apply for their license, but they could have that use, that right of use.
A liquor license is transferable.
Well, they are, but then there are also, I assume, restrictions on how you behave. So, but liquor stores are, and operations are watched much more closely than would be vacation home rentals because there are so few of them and consequences are more dire, I guess. But, um, yeah, so it isn't exactly analogous by any means. But I, I would not wanna make it terribly burdensome because
Right.
I, I, I don't think most of these, we've seen some of these people come through who inherited, you know, uh, the, the property from mom and dad and, and they're generally good operators. But it does seem like they need to go through that, uh, process, which, which suggests that here. It seems to me the current language suggests that.
To answer your liquor license, from what I know, people that have liquor license, they also put together situations where that liquor license is leased out and operated in a different location. So it becomes an income piece of property rather than a liquor license, pardon me.
Oh, okay.
And that is, of course, inheritable.
Yeah.
So they're, and whether they're all doing it under the, the best auspices of the law, I don't know. But I do know where situations exist like that. I mean, even from downtown to somewhere else in the county. And, and they have to look at those, and if they're legal, they're legal. So. I'm, I'm just, I like to see some indication regarding the grandfathering when it's the individual family member. In other words, um, if they show that they're a blood relative of somebody or a relative by an adopted child, that sort of thing. I, I have, I would like to see their grandfathering protected. It wouldn't normally be reviewed any other way. Because there are properties, I'm sure, that are operating that will not meet the new requirements. And then they're gonna be forced to the conditional use permit if we go that route, et cetera.
I have a question for staff. So, um, the, the family, even though they would inherit the use of the property, so you have a special use permit or a conditional use permit to operate a half-acre cabin someplace, and you want your family member to be able to inherit that. They can inherit the use, but they still have to go through the licensing requirement, the taxation requirement. Is that correct? So they may not pass a licensing requirement or any of those kind of things, but at least the use of the property can still remain theirs.
Without losing their grandfathering.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Would you please come up and introduce yourself, please, for the record, Rita, go for a minute? I know you guys hear that from me, but I, I have to.
Rita Chapman. No, this is good, cause I, I, um, first, um, what, we worked on this in 2014 and spent another year on getting a really, what we thought was a pretty comprehensive transfer in the last part. So we thought, if, my thought was if you could take what was from the existing ordinance right now on transferred properties and kind of slide it into this and review it that way, that would be good. Because it was totally taken out, other than to say not transferable. Part of why we worked on it at the, on the last 2014 ordinance was because the specific situation is, my husband and I have grandfathered in properties on our main street, which is, doesn't need a CUP. And there's no permit that we are grandfathered in. Both our names are on the property. He's a little bit older than I am. When he passes, his name goes off the property title. That becomes a transfer according to the county. They've answered that question. It is a transfer. I suddenly lose my grandfathered in, and actually my other two, excuse me, my other two less-than-one-acre permitted properties. I lose that ability to maintain my standard of living with my income property. My, my career is now gone. So we, I thought we worded it really well, how to transfer between spouses to maintain that continuity in our ability to maintain a, a living. But also, part of it was with real estate transactions. If someone is selling, if, if you, if it's okay, it's over an acre, this is only applying to an acre. If there's a real estate transaction occurring where someone has a vacation home rental, someone is not ready to use it for personal property yet, they wanna use a vacation home rental. If they passed all the guidelines, did all the things they needed to be, do, then that permit could transfer as long as they've met all the conditions as put forth by the county. So that sometimes was part of the transfer, was part of the sale of a property. And, uh, we had Jim Peterson with, uh, Integrity Real Estate. And we had some Realtors working with us on that because that was really important to them. Um, so grandfathered in properties, two of mine are permitted, but they're less than one acre. So with the not transferable and the not less than one acre, suddenly my income is cut in half. Or actually two-thirds, two-fourths. So with the not transferable and the not less than one acre, suddenly my income is cut in half, or actually two thirds, two fifths. So when you're putting in the less than one acre as an ability to be transferred, that's great. But look at what we did before and maybe think about putting that into this particular draft.
Thanks, Rita.
And would I lose my grandfathering of my main property if this went through?
That's a hard thing for me to answer right now.
That was created in 1950.
That's a, that's another thing.
Grandfathered in 1950, I have three cabins on the same property as my house. So what happens there?
We'll see what we come up with. We're here for questions for Rita.
Yeah. And, and this is only one thing. If, if you add in the less than one acre, that actually takes a lot of the, the ornate stuff off of me, too. I'll just reapply and hope it, hope it happens, but.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
This might be a wise one as well, so that we get some more look at it, let Megan's people look at it. And a proper way to approach trying to do what we're talking about here. And this protecting of the grandfathering, I'm certain there's state requirements there that we've got to meet, we may not be able to meet even. Who knows? So I, I guess I'd look at table in this one just because of the complexity of it. Not so much that we haven't got an idea where we're going with it.
Well, you know, I was thinking, we're really talking about use. Who knows how it might be operated? That, that's a different issue, but that is an issue we also have to be responsible for. If someone gets one of these properties, inherits it, and then operates poorly, then in a sense, we have to be responsive to that.
What if it was your husband, like Rita pointed out, that was the one that, that's a, that's a big issue.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the use needs to be protected. The operation, or the poor operation of this franchise, if you will, uh, could end use. Yeah, I mean, I, um.
What about a shorter review period? Follow me, when the operator, we, there's a lot of things we could add. But first, I'd rather get some direction. I know for myself, I'd rather get some direction about this grandfathering, about the fact that a husband or a daughter, are there differences? Uh, when you're talking inheritance of such a, the fact that liquor licenses aren't inheritable, that sort of thing. I'd like to get a little more information before I would weigh on in.
Do we have any idea how many grandfathered properties we have out there? I mean, is there like a dozen of them or less?
There's not many.
There's not very many.
I absolutely think that that's, you know, we should be able to figure out some way to address those.
Okay. Somebody like to put a motion, put this one on the table, same, we call it up, I mean, do you wanna speak on it? Yes, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Excuse me, Desil Peterson. One of the things that the committee was concerned about was a slightly different viewpoint, which is the current operator wants to have an end to their responsibility. We had one member of the committee who was an operator of vacation home rentals. And her name was still on the license when it got transferred to somebody who was not a responsible owner. And they came after her because her name was still on the license. So we need to take that, that into account as well.
That makes sense, thank you. Any questions for Desil? All right, somebody wanna address a motion to table this one like we did the other two and?
Um, we already have a motion on the floor.
No, we don't, that's why I said we need a motion. Do we have a motion?
Yes, it was moved by Keen and seconded by Lester to have Planning Department and the State's Attorney's Office review language to allow the transfer of the special permit use and conditional use.
I must have slept through that one, huh? You know, when you get old, you have these things happen to you.
I said it quietly, so you didn't hear.
All right, you, is that what you were trying to go like this for, give, thanks? Well, it didn't work. All right, any other discussion by the audience? The commission. All in favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carried. Now, yes.
Do you mind, I know we're getting kinda close on time, and there's one particular one that I wouldn't mind asking a question about if you'd entertain it.
Okay, I was going to advise that the density one and others could be long. And so I, i- if your question is on density.
Nope.
Okay, shoot. Because then I think we should call, pull the trigger and we'll get ready so other people can speak.
I picked a short one, at least I think it might be short. Is there a reason why in the current ordinances before us here, on page two, underneath four and D, recreational vehicles, VHRs are prohibited in recreational vehicles? And I ask that question because I know in other counties, in, in South Dakota, there are VHRs that are operated out of recreational vehicles. So I just wanted to know, is there a reason, is there something that prompted that?
Actually, yes, there was actually an applicant that had an empty lot with a shed, who had an RV parked there. And he was renting it nightly on Facebook. And he did come in front of the planning commission, request a CUP, and the planning commission denied it. It was not, uh, they felt that a RV is more appropriately in an RV park and not on a private piece of property rented out nightly.
I'm just, devil's advocate here, not too much different than a tiny home, not, not too much different. If it's, if it's got the capabilities to run the, I'm, I'm just asking a que, I know it's not in Pennington, well, I, I can't say I don't know it's not in Pennington County, but I know it's in other counties.
I think we, didn't we address one like this?
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner, I'll answer this one, because that caused a lot of trouble on this one that you're talking about. I would like to see this discussed at greater length, and, and I agree with you. And Jason was in a particular spot on one, and it was something I don't agree with. You can change an RV vehicle such that it changes the definition of the RV vehicle. And we did pass one, you are correct. So I would like to say this is gonna take longer than that, because I, I really oppose this. And Jason knew that, and, and Jason has some very good information about why what I oppose doesn't really exist. Go ahead.
Right, Jason Fennison, Assistant Planning Director. So both of these instances that we're talking about were case by case bases. So the one with the RV like Brittany was just brought up, was in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Uh, the guy had an RV out there on a lot in a residential neighborhood.
You said it was in, in a residential?
Yes, that's correct. So it was on a rural residential, nobody wanted to see an RV parked in that neighborhood. Uh, the other one, where the individual transferred the, transformed the RV into an efficiency dwelling, was on 15 acres of agriculture land, secluded from everyone. He was not, the neighbors couldn't even see him. So, uh, case by case basis is what the CUPs are intended for. I just wanted to shed some light on each one of those.
And some of the new RVs are just about like houses. You know, you get five slides and you skirt it, and they're just awful close to a house, probably better than some.
I hope we talk about this when we review the overall ordinance, but there was certainly a difference. And, and to be honest, that went like four, two, I think there was just two of us both. So the, the commission felt that that was a good situation, and I felt it was still an RV, so that's why I brought it up. I don't think it's a short discussion, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we table further discussion on the ordinance at this time.
Is there a second?
Second, yep.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to table the additional discussion on the memo list at this time, uh, so that we can duress, address the remainder of the agenda, is that what you meant?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, discussion, discussion from the audience. Discussion from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We're on to item number twenty.
Can I interrupt? Do we have a motion to continue the ordinance amendment to be heard at another meeting?
Oh, yeah, we have to do that, too. Sure we do. Is there a motion to continue the ordinance amendment to the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue ordinance. I gotta flip to the first page ordinance. Oh, eight, twenty-three oh one. And this is the final draft ordinance to the next meeting, which is, we name a date?
May eighth.
Eight eighth.
May eighth.
Eight eighth meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. On to item number twenty, I believe.
Item number twenty is the county board report. Uh, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the April tenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Very good, any questions for Brittany on that? And we do have two speaker requests, uh, uh, from the, uh, for item number twenty-one from Kristen Bennett.
I will try to be brief. In fact, because we have so little time left, I will just turn my.
You've got whatever time you need, I'm not gonna cut you off. We purposely planned for this, we may have to, uh, one of the commissioners may have to leave.
Okay, um, so you all are familiar probably with the ongoing saga of two-two-six-one-one Hazel in the Merchant Meadow. And it's kind of reached a new phase for me where I now, because of the cost I put into trying to get this application approved, the $10,000 septic, the $5,000 in windows, the fine for not having the right kind of application posted in the first place, $12,000 of lost rental revenue. I'm selling my primary residence now, so my neighbors will be happy to hear that, I'm sure. The question I have is whether the commissioners have any mechanism to allow me to rent the farm on a short-term rental basis, rather than wait until when I could possibly reapply in the fall? Because if not, I gotta sell that property, too. So when Rita's talking about the impact of the findings of the commission, when they go against the findings of the planning department, and they listen to the squeakiest wheels and don't take everyone's rights into consideration, my career is gone. I'm trying to hand over my company to my kids, now I can't retire because I don't have rental income. And I sent you guys an email, I tried to go through the appeal process, the court threw it out. Not their problem, your problem, and here I am, having to sell the home I had hoped to live in for the rest of my life. Because desolate and byron don't want rentals. So I mean, this is probably the last you'll hear from me, but I wanted to let you know the situation is dire for me. My daughters, our transition plan with my company, where I'm supposed to step out and make my income off of short-term rentals, has been kiboshed. Our transition team in Seattle is having to rewrite our business plan because my daughters can't make the money they need to off my company, because now I'm back in there taking my full salary. I, I'm not, you know, I mean, I'm really, I don't even know if you have a mechanism to remedy this. The only other thing I can do is go to the Supreme Court, which I'm not gonna do, but I don't understand how this happened. I, this is akin to like throw yourself at the wrist of the commission. Like, why should I have to sell where I live? Sell my investment property? Be called all of these names? Have you guys have the impression that I've misled the county when I never have? Be harassed and bullied about everything from how loud my horse is to, I, you name it. So, I mean, I put in my email a request to you to give me a temporary short-term rental license of some sort. I, I think I have three options. I can do like eighty percent of the people in the county, rent without a license. But like what, throw me in jail, make me sell the property? I'm already there, right? I could do that. I could sell the property, but I can't pay for them now. Or maybe some sort of remedy could be put in place temporarily, so I don't lose the very last bit of rental income, which would be the summer, which would give me breathing room. And I guess I'm just open to ideas. I have been denied my application once I was fully in compliance. But Naughtman said to me after the last meeting, you were denied for being out of compliance. I'm like, no, I wasn't. I was denied once I was in compliance. The property's been sitting vacant since October. My primary residence was purchased with no covenant in place, saying I couldn't have a rental. The HOA promptly put a new covenant in place that said I couldn't. Like, wow, okay, so I have a bigger mortgage than I planned, but I made it work by buying the kitty corner property to rent that out, which isn't even part of an HOA. There's no HOA, there's no requirement for me other than meeting what the county requires. And that worked for four years. And now that that's been done away with, now here I am having to potentially relocate out of Pennington County. Now I operate a rental home on the other side of the state, and I've met all the state requirements there, there is no county requirement. So the process to me, if you wanna take me as a case study, like Rita said, you lose your career. My retirement now, my whole retirement plan, my business transition plan, out the window because a couple of crabby neighbors. So why do I have to go through this life change? When the planning and zoning department helped me come into compliance, I paid the fine. So when you pay a fine for not having the right license, to me, that means great, thank you for paying. Now let's get you in compliance. I'm like, Roger that, new septic, bigger windows, close to forty thousand into it, close to a hundred thousand into it total. And then just denied. So this is an emotional thing for me now, because my life is changing, I have to move. And I guess my question is, like, is there anything the commissioners can do? A short-term conditional permit? Or if there's one disturbance or one problem, I voluntarily kept it off the market for six months now. And I can't afford it. I'm not gonna go bankrupt, but I had to put my daughters and my transition plan in the backseat while I tried to find someplace where I can have a short-term rental. So I mean, I guess if anybody has an idea of what you would do if you were me, I'm not gonna go to the Supreme Court, it's gonna be pointless. I would just be right where I am now. And if I go another month or two, I mean, my house is going on the market, period, so you won't see me anymore, probably. But I don't know about the rental market, I mean, the rental property, if I have to sell that, too, I will have to, if I can't rent it till the fall. And I don't even see how I could get approved in the fall with the same people saying the same untrue things about me and my property and the neighborhood. Did you guys get my email that had some of those comments? Where the, out of thirty-five households, four neighbors, I think, have put themselves to be the thorn in my side, if you can't get rid of me, it's up to them. They should be ashamed. And you saw the comments from the neighbors, these people make me embarrassed to live here. Why are they piling on you like this? And I don't normally get super worked up, but this is unfair, it seems illegal to me. And I don't know what to do.
Krista, at this point in time, though, we're restrained by what state law and ordinances allow. We can't do any action vote or motion or resolution in your regards. We can take what you're saying under advisement and certainly will. And that's about all we can
Right, that's kind of what I figured.
Come forward with and put on your table.
That's what I figured, I just wanted you to know. What has really happened here? There is no big nuisance in the neighborhood. This is a ten acre property, my other one, a six acre property. And just because some, you know the phrase nimby, the knot in my backyard? That's what it is.
Thank you.
I.
We're just not allowed to even, it, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to ask questions on an unpublished issue. We allow you the time to go up here and, and say that. And, and I understand where you're coming from, and it'd certainly be nice if we had more commentings, flexibility, but we don't.
Right.
And, uh, but we do take it under advisement, and, and certainly those that, that desire to ask questions of, of the staff and of our departments probably will.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I mean, I just thought you should know the impact that this is having on me, my family, my company, future. This has to go to a, a different kind of process than what it is right now. I mean, I might find somewhere else to live in Pennington County where I don't have the same hateful neighbors saying the same hateful things about me and the other two or three other property owners that they drove out. None of them put up this kind of fight like I did. The Fellermans, you saw what happened? They lost over $100,000. They're like, this is screwed up, but we're out of here. We'll just go back to Minnesota. The Kellys that owned my house before me, they're like, we can't even deal with these people. So, I mean, I didn't expect any remedy, I guess. I guess I could run an ad, biggest jerk ever wanted for 28 day at a time rental. By the time and energy I would. And then some of these neighbors would find out what good rental owners are like and what long term jerk rentals are like.
We've got to cut you short. We're getting into personal things that don't involve the business that we put on the table.
There's a major conflict of interest with the committee because this is personal. The parking thing, the acre thing, like the whole thing, the committee is in conflict of interest, and it is personal. It's been personal attacks since the day Byron filed his complaint.
I can understand that, but I, the commission doesn't review it based on personal matters.
I mean, I understand. I just wanted you to know where I am, and I wanted Desil to know, and I'm going to let Byron and the rest of the neighborhood know.
I would suggest you not bring up her name again.
Okay, a neighbor. I will let these neighbors know they won, but congratulations. This neighborhood is now known as A-hole Acres by the people who've had to leave.
Thank you. Rita, did you want to still? All right. Certainly allowable. Thank you. And if you just tap me on the shoulder, I don't think, if you want to talk on that same thing. Okay. All right. And we are getting near the drop dead time, so to speak, so we have items from the staff. No items from the staff. Anything from the membership?
Oh, wait, wait, we do have some.
Oh.
You're going too fast.
Well, we do have one membership.
Are you napping?
Super quick, Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So I was like, I told you guys, I'm taking over Tracy's duties, um, in her office, and I wanted you all to meet Alexa. Are you going by Bo Chandler Mueller?
I'm going by Mueller. Um, I'm married to Kyle Bochamp, um, going by my maiden name, and I realize now, Megan told me that the cameras will adjust based on the speaker's height, so I apologize in advance for how many times it's going to happen, but it's nice to meet you all.
Yeah. So this is Alexa. She'll be coming with me to, you know, several meetings. I'll be with her and obviously stuff available, and we'll be working on stuff together for quite some time before she is on her own, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, both of you. The item from the membership, I appreciate you giving me a little slack on that memo thing so that we could at least start out having some of this discussion. I think the folks that were here that came to talk on those items, I think they appreciated that we finally started getting our cards on the table. So that's all I've got to say on that.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Moving second to adjourn. Discussion, none. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, for adjourn. Thank you.